For this Hancock County Commissioners' special meeting on September 20th, 2022. Let's see, do we have any public comment?
Oh, how about I'm going to move to approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry about that.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, aye. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Going to our meeting minutes?
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the September 7th meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hello. Alright, array for me.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Andy, I just spoke with Mike. Traditionally, I think all job descriptions indicate the pay grade. And this one doesn't have that. We need to know what that grade is. At some point, Mike's doing some work right now, I think, to come up with that. But that's... That's the only issue I have with your proposed job description.
Well, thank you Commissioners, and I thought we discussed that at the previous meeting, and I apologize for not seeing it included. Monica, we were going to base it on the same as the position that Monica just hired in the Finance Department.
I think that was eight H, but don't...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Well, the H would be relevant for the job description, but the grades, grade eight.
That's correct.
That is correct, Andy?
Yes, sir.
Yes, grade eight.
Okay, so, other than that, we're ready to...
It's going to be divided equally between the two hours?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright.
Alright, so I'm going to move to approve the job description for shares in administrative assistant position between the airport and EMA. Authorize staff to advertise the position at pay grade eight, is that what we're...
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we usually, that's usually in the... In the description?
Each position has a grade by policy, so we...
Okay. So we're sure of that, there's no ambiguity there?
Well, I guess the only ambiguity is whether or not it's an eight, but I guess you people are pretty sure it's an eight, right?
The ones that, I mean, that would be consistent with what I understood from reform, too.
Yeah. Sounds to me like that's what it is.
Alright. We're sure.
The ones that I've seen, the pay grades that we have right now, list the positions underneath with the... Now, on the individual job descriptions, I can attest that that...
I just want to make sure this is ready for prime time, because I've seen some head shaking, and I don't...
Well, the only, Paul, this is a new position, so it's not like we go back to the policy, see what it is. It's to be established today. So we establish what this pay grade is we should be today, because we're establishing a new position.
Someone else can stand with me, so I can... I can go walk if you want.
I just want to make sure that we're, I mean, because we're taking action, right?
Yeah.
If everybody's fine, I'm fine.
And you're sure that... Who'd you say the other one was? Oh, Mary?
Yeah.
Mary was an eight?
Yeah.
And that confirms...
Correct.
Mary Jordan is an eight, the new assistant to the Treasury's office.
And that's what I based this in, and I apologize for the inadvertent admission, Commissioners.
Okay, so, everybody's come, okay, so my motion stands on its second.
Now, seconded. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much Commissioners.
Thank you.
On behalf of Leroy and myself, we're very grateful.
Let's look, let's see that again.
I think it's Andy.
Andy?
Yeah.
Well, I'm getting some out of mine.
Alright.
I could...
Ready to move on, Julie, Deans?
I just turned it off, my mic didn't want to work.
Alright. Ready to move on, Julie, Deans?
I just turned it off, my mic didn't want to work.
Morning. Requesting approval, purchase recording software.
When we did the temporary, when we did the one previous, right, like, how long was that contract for?
It's for a year, but conversion takes anywhere from four, nine, or months or longer, so...
Okay, Julie, you need to tell us why we're going to consider this sole source and didn't want to bid?
Well, I went out to bid, and this is, I did send this to this person, to this company. But they, at the time, on the timeframe that I had put on my, um, bid specs, my RFP, they couldn't meet that timeline. This is the company that we did sign for the RNS software.
When did you issue the RFP for this one?
Went out early this year, and they would do back this spring, so...
And when did this company submit a bid?
Two weeks ago. But we already had a software with them. We purchased, you guys let me purchase it for, just put on my website, like, in May or June.
So, are you thinking that you still have to RFP again to...
I'm just trying to avoid any problem. We have a ton of vendors who weren't selected, because for this vendor to know what everybody else bid and then allowed to...
They don't know. They didn't ask me.
You didn't, you didn't publicize it? That's good, alright, that's fine, that's good, because that's the defense we need to protect ourselves from other vendors complaining that they had unfair advantage on their bidding, so...
Why is this not... You're looking at purchases now, why is this not going through the budget process?
Green is what I'm asking that question.
It's built into your budget at all?
Not, not for the way they...
Yeah.
They, they want half upfront, and normally, most companies spread it over the length of the contract, so it would have been built into my budget.
So, coming...
In other words... That's why I didn't follow you in the memo, so, in other words, usually you budget so much a year to cover the expense.
Yes.
This company, so what we would have to do here is set up a... I don't know, how would we do that?
So, I mean, she would need to meet the immediate need if she's going to pay before, obviously, the end of the year, of 53, I think it was, so... That would be the question. You thought you had enough funds, but I don't...
Yeah, yes, I have, I mean, I have looked at my, um, my budget, and I will be between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars over my revenue for this year. And I've looked at my expenses, and I have forty-three, four that will be unspent.
So your suggestion is simply overrun the line that you would have paid this item and make it up at the end of the year with...
Unspent and revenue.
Anticipated, yeah.
And then this amount would not appear in next year's budget, but it probably should as a CIP of some sort, so that we don't get in a situation again, right? How often does this have to be?
Well, this, this upfront, um, the rest of, the rest of the cost is in milestones, which could take all of next year to pay the rest of it. And I did up my recording, um, fees for next year, anticipating that I might be switching. So, I'm only concerned about the upfront, because the rest of it can be met out of my budget next year.
In your proposed 23 budget?
Yeah.
But moving forward, like, is this a recurring, this is a purchase, and then...
So, in two years, we have to do it again, or four years? No, um, so, this would be a five-year contract, and I'm anticipating longer than five years with this company, so... So if there were, there was an expense, um, it would be like an upgrade to software, but it would not be of this new, no, no.
So, I guess my point is, we should be building a CIP and, and, I know I'm, that's a reserve. We should be building a reserve for this kind of, this magnitude of purchase over a period of five years, it sounds like. Is that...
I mean, that seems to be consistent since I've been here, what, where the direction that you're trying to go is to get all these regular, ongoing large purchases into some type of, yeah, lack of better terms, CIP, so you can raise every year over the next five to 10 years.
So we're not spiking them?
Yeah, great, but it really depends, obviously, on how often, like you said, how often that would have to be incurred as the magnitude of what you need to do with it.
So Julie, I was looking at it, I thought I read it in here, but then I'm hard to find in the spot, but every year, though, we do have a fee, right?
Yes.
Like a thousand or so, what was it?
Um, it, it figures out, too, what's twelve, twenty-three, it's like thirty-six thousand that we pay right now, and, um, that's monthly. But that includes the software, so, so for this, it's going to be, whether they say twenty-five thousand annually...
Yeah.
Which is still, so that should include any upgrades to software in that fee. So there has to be a major change after the install for it to be more than that.
So is that what you're building, is that what you have, have that budget?
Oh, that's, that's already in my line, like, my, my line that I would pay for my software and has been at fifty-five, and I bumped it up to sixty. And we don't habitually spend that much, because of the product that we have now, there are services we don't take, and we get credits, so... So what we rarely pay is less than that, thirty-six thousand.
So our, so our annual fee per se, you already have budgeted, it's your upfront costs for, and that's what Paul's saying, you should...
Yeah, just a budget.
Yeah, no, you're sure, yeah.
Okay, so... Excuse me, wait a second. Microfilming indexing is where you...
Yeah.
Is the annual... Is the annual fee of twenty-five thousand dollars a year on this?
Yes.
In addition to your payments?
Mm-hmm.
Where's the twenty-five come from, this?
It's going to come from that five hundred.
And payments are coming out of the five hundred as well?
Some of them will be.
Some of them.
Are you talking about the milestone payments?
Is that the name of this thing, is?
It's a, it's a claim, but we have to have half, half upfront.
Yep.
And, and I'm asking for the half, because I can make the milestone.
Well, I'm looking at the 23 budget.
Mm-hmm.
Wondering where, what, what is your payment, milestone payment each year, ten-six, ten-seven?
No, the milestone payments are, are considered when they reach different parts of the project.
So what is your, what is your payment other than maintenance for next year? Do you know?
It's, it's going to be the maintenance, it's going to be Fiddler until we switch, and then the twenty-five thousand. I still have to make those milestone payments, but I haven't enough money in my budget to make those milestone payments as the conversion is going on.
Milestone payment is, is the cost of the...
New software.
Okay.
When, when you say you have that in your budget, elsewhere in your budget?
It, it should, it should come out of that five hundred line, because we won't pay twenty-five thousand dollars next year. That's after the first year.
So twenty-five is not the maintenance fee for 23, correct?
Correct, so the milestones should be able to come out of that line.
Yeah, you, you're telling me right now, you don't know what your milestone payment is yet, so...
What it is, is some software costs fifty grand.
Upfront.
And they're making, right?
Upfront.
Upfront, and then each one is, as the software gets implemented, there's these milestone payments that they like, okay, we've gone, and everybody knows how to use the software. There's, you know, it's ten thousand, whatever dollars on that, so it's something that's going to get worked in over this year, as that, as the new software gets implemented into the system. And that's just part, essentially, you're just paying for the whole software package.
But you're not paying for the whole thing the first year, though, you're only paying half of it?
No.
No, we, we pay half upfront.
Oh, and then pay the milestones?
Yeah, we pay the milestones.
So you're going to pay the full fifty thousand in 23, correct?
Oh, four hundred, a year.
Four hundred and six, we have to have fifty-three upfront.
Which you're going to pay this year.
Yes, and the rest, none of the rest will happen well into 23, because of, because of the conversion process.
So being twenty-four before you have to be fully implemented?
Well, I'm hoping it will be implemented sometime, I'm thinking between June and September, October of next year. But we won't, but we still won't be up to having to pay the twenty-five thousand maintenance for another whole year.
Right, you're going to have to pay the other fifty, though.
Yeah, yeah, but that can come out of that five thousand.
Sixty, sixty thousand, you have that five hundred?
You have that five hundred.
Fine. So, back to Paul's original question, shouldn't we be setting up a reserve account, salting some money away every year?
Well, I would have, but I've already done my budget issue. This is the first time we've had a vendor, um, put it to us like this.
Yeah, well, you're, you're a bunch of hesitants, fine, there's just plenty of time to do that. And I think, I think Paul is absolutely right, that we should be, you and Mike should talk about coming back to us and proposing some kind of a reserve account. This and any other CIP project you might have.
Well, and, and actually, after I presented my budget, Chuck and I talked, because, because this software will be, will be going on the county server. So I said to him, I said, "Well, I can take this line right here," and I showed him the line in my budget, "So I can take that line right there and put it in a reserve, that's where it should be for technology."
Okay, why don't you figure that out and come back to us, because I think Paul is absolutely right, you should be, if you're buying a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, once every five or six years, you're going to be CIP-ing it, so that we don't have to...
Look, even if it's not five or six years, you know, it's a little bit longer, you know?
At some point, we can start preserving, if we know we got to.
Yeah.
But it's easier than you coming here today and saying, you know, "I'm, I'm twenty thousand dollars short, can you find it?" you know, so...
So, wait, I'm sorry, it's beginning to be green, where, I'm looking at the budget. And you keep talking...
The five hundred line, where's this?
Yeah.
It's nine thirty-five hundred, it's microphone and recording, it's highlighted in yellow at sixty thousand.
Okay, so it says thirty-five hundred.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so, what yours... Sorry, I think I'm asking the same question over and over, but I...
Okay.
That line is... Does that cover, that's where you're going to get the rest of that, the, the...
Yes.
The other half, or not the other, yeah, the other half, milestone half, we'll call it. So that's where that one's going to come from. So, the line that you're talking about that's really a CIP is which line? That one, after the milestone?
Um, okay, so in my, um, part-time line, I put eight thousand dollars, which actually should have come out of my budget this year. And I talked to Chuck, and I said, "I should be, I should put this, change this to a reserve account for technology." When he and I were talking about the servers and the stuff that we, that we need for the servers.
Okay, so, but, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that...
I meant without changing my budget numbers, I...
So you just moved to, took your way with that time and make a new reserve account line, right? That's, that's, that's the easiest way to do it.
But my contention is that that line should be more like twenty-one or twenty-two thousand, because if this expenditure is spread out over five years, that's basically twenty-two thousand.
Yes, but if she's going to continue to raise sixty thousand in their indexing, she's going, she's going to have half of her purchase in one year, which is, if she's, this happens to her again, she's going to need that, that year, so, I think, and Julie's not saying that she's going to need it in five years, she's going to need it in six, seven, eight years.
Yeah, 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 I understand that, but the purpose of the, the reserve account is so that hopefully that's the case, but just in case it's not the case.
I don't, I don't, if we said that just eight thousand, three, four years ago, what now, she'd have had reserved money today for what she needs in overage, because, you're how much short, Julie?
Well, I, what did I say, I have, I'll have eighty-six thousand dollars.
So you're only fourteen, fifteen short?
And then forty-three in money that I'm not going to spend, so...
Yeah, you have, what, what's the total purchase price?
One oh six.
One oh six.
Okay, so you're, you're twenty-two thousand short this year. So, Paul, the motion is, is that we approve the purchase and we allow her to overdraft her indexing line?
Yeah, that nine thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred. And with anticipating, we'll take the overage out of her unanticipated revenue. That right, Julie, does that sound right?
That sounds right.
So... I, I just, oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, here, here you go, we're going to move to approve the purchase from, who's his company?
Harris Technologies.
How about I started out, you can, this is what I had, to move to approve the purchase of recording software, uh, the recording software from, uh, the acclaimed software from Harris Technologies for one oh six nine. The part, the rest of it is what I have, oh.
And to permit the registrar to overdraft...
Or overspend.
Overspend line thirty-five hundred. Anticipating. She will make up the overage from unanticipated revenue. It's other, we sort of count, we can deal with when we're finalizing.
Yeah.
I, I just, oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, here, here you go, we're going to move to approve the purchase from, who's his company?
Harris Technologies.
How about I start it out, you can, this is what I had, to move to approve the purchase of recording software, uh, the recording software from, uh, the acclaimed software from Harris Technologies for one oh six nine. The part, the rest of it is what I have, oh.
And to permit the registrar to overdraft...
Or overspend.
Overspend line thirty-five hundred. Comma, anticipating. She will make up the overage from unanticipated revenue. This other, we sort of count, we can deal with when we're finalizing.
In anticipation?
In anticipation of paying the overdraft from unanticipated revenue.
Okay, so this is what I, this is what I have, move to approve the purchase of the acclaimed recording software from Harris Technologies for the sum of one hundred six thousand nine, nine hundred dollars, and permit the registrar overspend line thirty-five...
Hundred.
Hundred, in anticipation, uh, anticipation of paying the overdraft from unanticipated revenue. Does that make sense?
And I'm going to second that motion.
Alright, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, you got one other, you got one other ask on there?
I do, but I can, I don't have to do it at the same time, do you want me to?
That's what we're talking about, let's, let's...
Okay, so there, there, we don't, we don't have to prove this right now, but there is another software in conjunction that I will want to purchase, and it is, um, it is an automatic indexing product, and the cost of that is forty-one...
Forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand.
And I don't have to, I don't have to stack that process at the same time, but, um, I, I am...
Have you, have you been up to RFP on that?
Well, it comes with the software, it, it's some...
From this company?
It's not from this company, it's with someone that they work with, and we've actually had it before, and it's a lovely product. And it might be another discussion, but...
Big discussion, just where are you going to get your funding?
That's the other discussion for another time. But, but it won't be a problem.
Will it be a problem paying for it?
Correct.
But, but that item really is a budget item, because you're not anticipating spending that before this year.
No, I'm, I'm thinking maybe January to, to come up with the half, and I will have that in my surcharge.
Alright, let's, let's talk about that, when you come back with your proposal, move overtime to reserve and...
Yeah, because that, in my opinion, that should be called out in the budget.
Well, in the other part that amuses or intrigues me is, is that if you do have that kind of money somewhere, why isn't that reflected in your budget?
The money to pay for that, it's going to, I would pay for that out of my surcharge, that is not... It's not county revenue. I would say, I'm saying by the time I need to pay for that, I would have that money in surcharge to pay for the down payment.
I guess at a minimum, then you're going to have to show a forty thousand dollar revenue to your budget from surplus, then show the forty thousand dollar purchase by yourself. So, yeah.
Because the sur...
The surcharge can only be, I pay revenue to you for work that my girls do in the office on old stuff, but I don't have to do that. I choose to do that. So, I'm saying between now and the end of the year, and my, and unspent surcharge money, I'll have enough to do the down payment on the other software.
And, and, but that surcharge money is reflected in the revenue side.
What I pay to you, not, not every penny that I take in, because that's not county revenue.
So that purchase is, I'm really confused, so that purchase would be outside of the county budget?
No, 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 she's going to have to show that purchase in her budget, because she's going to have to add an equal amount of revenue to her 23 budget to cover that purchase.
So, so I have to change that budget?
She has a part of it now that they call surplus, that she doesn't have to report through the budget process. But if she wants to purchase, like, this forty thousand dollars, then she would purchase that from a budget, but she would add that revenue.
Oh, because it has to enter in the budget?
Yes.
She can't spend directly out of a surplus. She has, so, so Mike, you understand what we're saying? I believe so. Basically, you're just going to establish the actual cost of that software, you're going to enter an equal amount in a revenue from surplus to cover that in the 23 budget. Will there be enough in, so the eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollar fee, annual fee?
It will go.
Next year?
The next year, yeah, and that could be paid out of surcharge, or we could build it back into the budget, you know?
Fundarily, we'd come out of the five hundred, thirty-five hundred.
Yeah. It still will be less than what we pay now.
So. With all this, this is nothing that we have to take action on, this is something that you're going to.
I'm gonna bring forward with more information.
Through the budget process.
She's gonna come back with an amendment to her budget for a couple, for a couple reasons. And, um. What's I gonna ask you? Is this also gonna affect your, uh, the retirement part, right?
Yes, at all.
Deficiency.
Yes, it will, yes, it will all come out in the wash.
Because we can have some changes.
Yeah, we can changes.
Okay. Give it that, all right. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm still.
Yeah. Eighty-five percent. That was it.
Good morning, Commissioners.
All right, so nothing added to your monthly report?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna move to accept and file on this monthly report from T Supervisor as presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now we've got some actions that wanna have take place.
You just wanted to go through them? Miller, do you wanna introduce them, or?
Uh, I can introduce them if you'd like. Uh, the first one is the transfer of the, uh, monies that were appropriated through the UT budget for reserves. And the requested action is to transfer those to their exact, actual reserve accounts.
Okay, so I'm gonna move, move to approve and sign their request for transfer of budgeted funds as presented, dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'm just curious if we, I should name those, but.
You know, um. There's the budget, it's the budget account, E sixty seventy seventy one hundred road reserve twenty thousand. E sixty seventy seventy two hundred environmental cleanup five hundred. E sixty seventy seventy three hundred. E nine one one twenty-five hundred. E sixty seventy seventy, uh, five hundred auto imagery four thousand. And then they're going into the corresponding G accounts for road reserve with, uh, G oh five thirty-two hundred. Uh, environmental cleanup would go into G oh five thirty-four oh five account. And a E nine one one reserves, uh, G oh five thirty-four hundred. And auto imagery G oh five forty twenty.
But they're all on that transfer sheet, so I, I just move to approve and so my contention is that they are all called out on that transfer sheet that we're signing.
All right, any other discussion?
That makes sense, everybody.
Makes sense to me. Could you second it already?
I'm starting to.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up?
Um, the UT budget for, uh, July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Pages one through four. Pages two, three, and four are complete. Page one, at the lower right-hand column, uh, lower left-hand column of the page, the section about LD one. That is not complete, I still need the information from the state to get the, uh, perfecta. Um, but I wanted to get this to the Commissioners so you'd have it to look at. And if you had any questions, um, I will present it in a final draft after I get the numbers from the state.
Well, to me, that doesn't affect your budget.
No, not at all.
Yeah, so I was going to move to approve the unorganized territories budget for FY, uh, for FY July one, twenty twenty-three through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
June thirty.
Yeah, excuse me, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four is presented and recommended. And the reason I'm saying that is because that's different than our fiscal year, that's why I'm calling out the things.
And for the record, Miller, this is the proposed budget you're gonna send to legislature, correct?
Yes.
So the, if this is not a budget, Paul, this is the proposed budget, he'll present to legislature and they'll, they'll finalize it, so.
So you're saying I should, but I.
I'm saying that it would be clearer if you said the proposed budget.
The unorganized territories proposed budget is what you're saying actually.
I think so.
Okay, so that's good. Does that sound right, Miller?
Yes, I, I think the unorganized territory budget is proposed by, by me. The Commissioners, uh, approve the proposal and sign it, and then it is submitted to the auditor, who, uh, state audit. Who then presents it to the legislature who has to vote on it and will hopefully it's approved sometime in March.
So, in other words, this is a proposed budget till the legislature takes their action?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to approve Miller's proposed budget.
Yeah, okay, so that's what my motion is, I can.
No, I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the, the third item is the regional animal control.
So. Sorry.
In your, in your packets were the agreement that Washington County uses and the agreement that Penobscot County uses. I wrote one for Hancock County, merging those two together. The Regional Animal Control Committee reviewed it. And basically made two changes, two minor changes, and, uh, they've approved it. And now the question is, will Commissioners, uh, I'm not asking for approval to, uh, to sign a contract with Lemoine, but just approval of this, uh, this agreement to move forward.
There's one, uh, there's one correction on his, uh, page, our signed page. He's got Penobscot County listed as, it's still Hancock. Probably from he was.
Yeah, so what I was.
My, my. Uh, page three, where the signatures are, three, item ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Suck a line in there. Says Penobscot, should say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
I've read that I don't know how many times, and the, uh, committee reviewed it, and nobody picked up on that. Thank you.
So Miller, if we had several towns involved in this, we have a contract with each town, is that correct?
Yes.
So.
Again, I think in order for this to work, it's gotta be on a volunteer basis. If we try to force people to join, there will be pushback and it won't work. Right now, we have eight communities that are interested in doing this.
What happens if the other seven ultimately just decide not to?
I think then it falls by the wayside. I don't think, I don't think that the two of us, two towns could afford to do it. I, I think the way this works is because of multiple community involvement. Otherwise, it's not gonna be cost-effective for, for just one or two communities.
But what's, procedure-wise, process-wise, and what now, what do we do? Should we set these aside, does each town agrees, we just set them aside, waiting to see how many want to come on board before we sign, or do we sign each town up as they agree and, and, I don't, how do we implement this with one or two towns waiting for the rest of them to make up and on?
I think that's a good question. Uh, the Regional Animal Control Committee is meeting this Thursday. I can bring that up to them. But I do think it is contingent on multiple towns' involvement, not just one or two towns, but.
And you think that, that official involvement comes at like town meeting?
No, I don't think it has to. Think of the town doing, uh, snowplow contracts. The town goes to town meeting and requests X number of dollars, uh, for winter road maintenance. Then the selectmen go out to bid and sign a contract with whoever the snowplow provider should be.
So you think the town funded?
And I think the animal, I think the same thing happens with the animal control officer. Each town goes to town meeting, requests X number of dollars for their animal control budget. That money would be in that account, and then the town selectmen hire an animal control officer, no different than signing the agreement with the county to, uh, provide the animal control.
And right now, we're approving, we're really just approving the concept, the contract that we've created, but we're not, we're not signing, we're not signing up.
Yes.
I think signing an agreement is quite a ways down the road. We need to get a concept plan in, in place, then we need to advertise, get a job description. Then we need to advertise for somebody to fill the job description. If we can't fill a position, there's no sense to move forward with the program.
So this is just us moving the ball forward on what you've created by looking through the contracts? So we can start presenting things to folks.
Yep. And, and I think the idea of moving this forward now is so that we have numbers for the towns, so that they can go to their spring town meetings, uh, and, and get their money approved. For the whole, so everything can move forward.
Sure.
I just had, excuse me, I have a couple of questions. The one, is this gonna fall under the supervision of, of, uh, Miller? Or is this something that is going to come to us? I, I contacted the academy, yes, they do not have these standards set for animal control officers, but.
It is, it is going to be through the UT, the same as Penobscot and Washington County do it.
So they won't have any arrest powers, they won't be able to enforce anything other than animal. Because if it has anything, if they have arrest powers or have the ability to enforce other laws, that would have to come under me, and, you know, I'm not gonna deputize someone that hasn't been through at least a bit of pre-service training.
But, well.
I, I think typically most local animal control officers have been able to, not arrest powers, but have been able to issue summonses for, um, vicious dogs or this, that, and the other. But no, they would not have arrest powers.
Yeah, and then, and then when they, if they get in a situation that that happens, that's when they call law enforcement, just like town does.
It's, it's. If it's a dangerous dog situation, they do call, so a dog bite, you know, someone goes to the hospital, the hospital no revises. To do that, but I'm just looking at the what ifs, the what ifs, and if this person is not available to handle a, a, an animal complaint, where does that go from there? That, that doesn't come down to me.
I think, I think from there, it's gonna fall back on where it does right now. When an animal control complaint comes in and I get a call, I try to figure out how to deal with it.
Okay.
That's what, we, we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, I mean, we have two active contracts right now, one in Washington, one in Penobscot, correct, Miller?
Yes.
So, I mean, that, that question should be easily answered, what goes on down there? And I think Paul's right, I think today all we have to do is basically, uh, agree to the concept and and authorize Miller to move forward with refining the details.
So I was gonna, yeah, this was gonna be my motion, move to approve the concept of our proposed regional animal control agreement with each interested municipality and the unorganized territories as presented in the sample, sample, it's only a sample. Lemoine document example provided by the UT director. So all I'm saying, that's not the contract, I'm saying, that's the con, we're basing the concept on that document.
Miller, is that sufficient?
I think so.
And I'll second the motion.
I think so for now, yes.
Yeah, because obviously it's gonna, without question, there's gonna need to be some changes. We don't know what they are at this time, but you just need to know from the Commissioners whether we're interested in this, and my motion expresses that interest. It is the intent of the, okay?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Something works.
Before Miller goes, though, um. Maybe if I see. I always saw a map in here.
Yeah, what was the map?
That's that, uh, landing, it's a clutch's landing, is it?
Yes.
What do we?
Yes, they, they finally got the survey done. And it doesn't, the property that's owned by the state doesn't go out around the further point like the, uh, uh, NU PC map showed, but it does go out quite a ways beyond the gut. So what they're looking at is trying to get out to like that, beyond the gut on that first, uh, I don't know if I'd call it a point, but that section will land next to the Rankin property and put the boat launch ramp in there.
What's this apparent old headline? What's that, uh?
Where are you looking at?
Well, between the Rankin Road and one seventy-nine is a straight line. Runs southeast to northwest. There's an apparent old headline.
I don't know what that is.
It's not pertinent to this, this discussion, though, you know?
No.
An apparent leech field or? Can't read this, so small.
Well, it looks like that's the septic system for, uh, the Rankin house, and it's crossing the property line a little bit.
Okay, so the gut we're talking about, is that narrow section? Miller, that's the top?
No, no, on, uh, you see where it says Grand Lake, Blackbae Hydro Pattness? It's that point right underneath of there, where they were proposing to put the new ramp.
And that, uh?
Then that's the property line to the left of that, to the right of that.
Right, but the, uh, the, the arrow to the left of that has flow, that's that gut we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's could be, that was out of the question, I take it, huh?
I, when I talked to Dano, he did not think his, uh, superiors would approve that plan.
You're talking. That's a word, it says Digbrooke and Lake and Grand Lake, you're talking about that little I don't know what to call it, that little space there?
I don't know what you're.
Here's the map. Are you talking?
Are you here?
Right, that's what we call the gut. This is, this is land, this is land, it's all water.
Yeah. And.
And that, that gut is a sandbar that keeps filling in.
Okay, so that's what, you're not, the excavating that is what's not gonna get approved.
I don't believe that's gonna get approved, it didn't sound like it.
Okay, so the property, the state owns the property right to the property line between
Yes.
the basal ranking?
Yep.
And they think they can put a. And they think they can put a landing on the southeast side of that line?
Yes, yep. And he thought there was a fairly deep spot in the, in the lake rate. Out from that, it would be ideal to put the, the foot of the landing into.
So you need to get us, be able to get over.
Well, the state owns all of that right now.
How, how far is that, Millen, from the highway to the proposed landing? I don't see a legend on, oh, yes, I do.
Hundred, two hundred, three hundred.
Two, two, three?
Four, four hundred feet maybe?
Four hundred feet. And this looks to me like there's room enough for a parking area and everything, right?
Yes.
And would UT have to put the bill for all of this, or is it staying?
No. No, Bureau Packs and Lands would pay for quite a lot of it, we'd just have to put in a percentage.
Yeah, okay. So you're going to pursue that with them and?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Keep us, keep us updated.
Lee Roy? All right, so the first thing. I'm going to move to reconsider the action of September 7th, 2022 at the CFPs to the non-aviation use. Like the R27. Comma 2022, right?
When you say reconsider.
So what I, we took a vote to go out to RFP and I'm asking for reconsideration of that vote, so.
And I think the proper move would be to move to rescind that vote because if we reconsider, now we're going to have to come back and decide whether or not we want to now avoid that. I'd take another motion to to, to rescind this. Because that's what we really want to do is.
Well, what we would do, procedurally, what I'm proposing is that we consider that, that action. Then we got to vote to reconsider it.
And we vote.
And then we vote on the original motion and if.
Okay, so, all right, then I will move, I will second the motion to reconsider that, that action we took. All right, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what's on the table now is the vote on, on that original motion.
And it's, and it's been determined since that vote was taken that RFP is not necessary.
That's right.
For that reason, that I think we should move to rescind that action, that vote we took.
Well, what we're, what we're doing, because we're reconsidering it, we're revoting on that. So I will be voting no on that motion because that will that does the same thing, procedurally, that does the same thing.
Yeah, does the motion need to get?
No, it's on the table.
So your motion is to?
It, it's the original motion, which we can look at in a minute.
So I can, any discussion? Well, yes, I want to see that because wasn't there more than that motion besides going out to RFP? Was there more to it?
No, uh, let's go back to it. So the original motion. And it was under the export. There you go. The motion was this, move to place a legal ad in the local paper seeking RFPs for non-aviation use for parcel PR2 on a ramp road, cruise or drive as recommended. So that's what we're voting on.
So we're going to re-vote that again?
Yes.
Others in favor? Others nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, okay, so now, I'm sorry, this is messy, but I didn't see any other way to do this. This is going to be my motion, move to authorize the airport manager to continue to work with the individual interested in leasing the land parcel PR2 to bring a proposed lease amendment. Bring a proposed lease agreement. Back to the commissioner, that later date for our review and consideration. Rather than seeking RFPs for non-aviation use land parcel PR2 at the corner of Ramp Road, Cruise or Drive. So that's my motion, do you want to explain why I'm making that motion?
No, you okay with that, Lee Roy?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm gonna second that motion. All right, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, and the reason I did this is because I just think that it's not fair to somebody to, we, we touched on it last meeting. And now that I know that this is not a requirement of the FAA, I think this is a, a more fair way of talking about it.
All right, anything else from you, Lee Roy?
No, that, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now it's about your time.
I can simplify it. Gladly, listen, you understand the motion, just approve what I submitted and you can go with that. I'll just throw that out as an option.
So what we're doing, Sheriff? During that civil process?
Civil town contract.
Okay.
I guess, all of them.
First thing we're talking about is revenues, I don't.
What's the, what's the big jumping? Kind of the assets?
We would, well, what we're looking for depends on how many cruisers we get, we'd be selling, you know, some of the ones that we replace.
Twenty thousand dollars worth?
Crazy the amount of vehicles, what they're getting, even used vehicles are being sent. So that's, that's what that proposal was, that's what that changes.
No issue with that, all right?
Fast Personal Services. Um, the change, obviously, is that I'm asking for another deputy standing in January, then another one standing in July and promoting two more deputies to sergeant positions. That's what the difference is between this year's and next year's proposal. And, you know, I guess I'll just be going over and replowing, uh, the same ground we plowed before is that we are busy and there are more call for services. State lease colonel is retiring at the end of this month and I have no idea who the new administration is or what their views are going to be, so we need to start planning for the day that that comes, that they're no longer going to be handling more patrol. Our, and the sergeants positions are needed because the lieutenants and the chief and myself are just buried with, with the things that we have to accomplish and we need to get the sergeants down there so that they can actually work with the patrolman and pick up some of the slack that they've got on going on. What I'd like to do eventually is get to the point where if we have two contracts that we have four deputies working, two and eight, excuse me, four, uh, two slots, then we would have two deputies in each one of those slots and cut the size of them down. You know, for example, you take slot one, there's eight pounds that one deputy is responsible for. If we were able to put two in that slot, we could narrow that down to four and be a little more proactive instead of just running from place to place to place. And the other costs, uh, the employee costs, those are associated with, obviously with the salaries.
Now.
Excuse me, uh, how much of the, there's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in irregular line? How much of that is the new, new positions and the increase? You know, you know, I'd like to see in the future, and I know it's a lot of extra work, and I'd like to see the lieutenants separated out and the sergeants separated out, just like we do the detective.
We can do that.
Yeah, it's, you know.
Yep.
Also, don't you have an individual computation sheet for each position? So what I'm looking for is how much the, how much increase will have been to the seven hundred and two thousand without the, the new positions and the size of the motion?
The new full-time position, what I have here is fifty-nine thousand, one forty-three.
Per position?
Uh, just for the full-time and then the part-time one.
Fifty-nine one?
Fifty-nine, one forty-three. Uh, the, the halftime would be twenty-nine, five seventy-one. And for the promotions of the two sergeants would be eighty-four hundred.
One and eight with ninety-seven thousand of that, it's this, the other is just the seven percent cooler and, and step increases, correct?
Yes.
So the hundred and seventy seventy-three thousand is just in regular increases, correct?
Uh, I, I don't have the math, but that's what you've got there.
A hundred and seventy thousand, right. All right, so we're talking about, we're talking about an increase of ninety, some ninety-seven thousand based upon new positions and promotions for sergeant. Paul, what were you going to say?
I'm trying to see how the action that we took on the school officer, where that is.
It is, it is, that, that will be. When we finalize that, we have to add that in, it's just like a town contract, money in, money out.
Okay, that's what I was. It's not even going to be in this budget, it'll be in this town contract budget, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and there will be an offsetting revenue for that, so we'd actually, there's no increase in your taxation, so.
That's what my question.
And that, that doesn't show in my, my proposal because we have to finalize that at this point, so.
So with the addition, with your, if you get the addition of the fall and halftime, have you also adjusted? You know, the vehicle, everything else to?
Well, we haven't got down that, yeah, we're gonna consider that in vehicles, absolutely.
So what's that? Just to bring all that together, so that that proposal is not just an increase there, it's an increase in a bunch of lines, do you have? What's the impact of that, is what I'm trying to figure out?
Well, your employee, your, your employee cost obviously was.
Of course, yeah. But so does, so doesn't the vehicles and the churns and all that, right?
Right.
But they're not reflected here.
They're not reflected in that line, no.
No, no, but they're not reflected later in the budget.
Well, we, we put in projected that we were going to get the other vehicles that I'm supposed to get this year. The money that, that's already in my budget, twenty twenty-two. We budgeted for four vehicles next year. That's, that's what that number that you'll see on the vehicles is. And I'll, when we get down to that, I mean, I, I got an email from a dealer that was supposed to be getting some of those from here. Uh, my Fords are already settled out for this year. Um, the new twenty twenty-three Fords alone, the gas modes are forty-five thousand, eight hundred, which is more than what they quoted for tire hose. Um, the rangles are gone, charges are not, you can't order them and my understanding is they're going to discontinue making charges. So we either, it's up to the commissioners on how many of those tire hose that I have a hold on, you're willing to purchase. And we discussed before using our funds to pay for those.
Okay, so that, that's my question there is because that increases, so in here, if I, I know I'm skipping a tad, but I'm just trying to get my, wrap my head around it. In vehicles, you're requesting forty-two five, or excuse me. Yeah, forty-two five.
No, to buy vehicles?
No, no.
We're, we're proposing two hundred and twenty thousand.
Two hundred and twenty thousand to buy vehicles in your reserve account? Line seventy-three hundred?
Yes. And if we do decide, if, if you do decide to purchase those sort of Aqua Funds, we should show that as revenue. That amount of revenue so that, you know, down the road, we can track back and see where that money came from.
We need to have a, a separate discussion on how many vehicles we need for twenty-three.
Correct.
We need an updated sheet here on who needs them and so on.
So, so here. Okay, so you're right, your, your vehicle expense is going up nineteen percent because of the things you're talking about.
The increased cost of vehicles.
Okay, but it's not an increase, you, you, let's say you're adding two new deputies. Okay, so that's two more cars, right? So that's, is that reflected in that two twenty, is, I guess, the question?
It is not, Commissioner, that's going to be handled one of two ways. There's been other discussions about
Okay.
multiple vehicles and whether we're driving ones that we shouldn't be driving, essentially, so.
So let's go down through this list you just gave us if we could and tell tell us who in twenty-three that we're going to purchase a new vehicle for?
Well, we start, start right at the top, uh, you know, the spare one, that's obviously we're not going to, we replace that with one that plays.
Right, so what's?
But then you look, let's go all the way down to number ten, eighty thousand, two hundred. That is the vehicle that our K nine officers had, we've had discussion.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, eleven.
Okay.
That is the vehicle that Deputy Stanton's using that has the K nine, it's already got a cage in it. If you go forward and this comes to fruition, with a K nine officer. You know, we can work some sort of a deal where we replace a vehicle and you get a vehicle with a K nine, but those should be.
I'm sure, I'm sorry, the cruiser number ninety-three, number eleven, is that a K nine vehicle today?
It is.
So why is, and Stanley's going to become a K nine officer?
He is.
Why isn't he keeping unit ninety-three and use it as a K nine vehicle?
Because you wanted, you talked about, do we have a vehicle that could be used for an animal control officer? This would be an ideal vehicle to use because it's already got a kennel in it.
No, but, but, but the bottom line is that no, you don't have a vehicle with K nine, the shared K nine officer. If Stanley keeps the vehicle that he has now, which is a K nine vehicle.
Yeah, if he keeps it, you don't have one.
Right.
Or, or you would have to take one of these with tall mileage and, and pay for a kennel.
Yep, and we need to, we need to understand that by agreeing to give the shared ECO officer, this vehicle, we're going to have to buy Stanley a new vehicle.
And a kennel.
And a kennel, cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. All right, so just that, that discussion aside, Scott, where else? Who else is getting a new vehicle in twenty-three on this list?
Well, they should come down through Jennings, Grindle. One is, is MBEA.
Jennings is going to get new care, yep.
Grindle.
Grindle's going to get new care.
Yep, then we get down to Furnell.
Furnell gets a new care.
Mahon, Frank Jennings.
Now Frank, Frank is a, that's a detective's vehicle, right? So that doesn't necessarily have to be. It doesn't necessarily have to be a town.
Correct, it's much better to have it because they can put all that.
Doesn't have to be a town, we just.
Well, what else, what else would you? What else would you suggest? Not a pickup.
What you got now?
He's got one of the Fords, he's got shares, and there are no more available.
And, and Jake has got a.
He's got a Chevrolet.
Traverse.
Traverse.
Traverse, you know?
Yep.
Okay, let's just set Jennings aside for now. What else? Who else?
And then we get down, if we replace some of these, you know, the eighty thousand in that place, it gives us a couple decent spades to go down with.
Two, three, four, five, six. Is that my number right?
T's, six or sevens? I don't know how many of them.
Actually, I, I actually had identified eight. And some of the ones that were lower levels, but they are spares. So I identified eight plus, if you authorize the two positions, you're talking ten vehicles.
And then the budget is four.
Correct, but what I was hoping, I was personally hoping is that for all the cruiser needs that the sheriff had for 23, we could pay for that at ARA. And then reserve perhaps half of what he has proposed for the reserve accounts for vehicles to set aside for the G account at the end of the year. We wouldn't spend it. In other words, we'd, it's like a CIP, so. Well, that might, that might not work because I think there's, quite honestly, gentlemen, there's gonna be a limit to how much we're gonna spend out of ARA.
I get it.
And I gotta say, at, at sixty thousand dollars a vehicle, I really don't see us spending six hundred thousand dollars out of ARA for cruisers.
Okay, yeah, I can't hate my love on that.
Do, yeah, I can't hate my love on that. No, so we've got to decide, gentlemen, how much do you, how much money do you, you're comfortable with out of ARA for cruisers for 23? We got, we got some.
Well, there's that, but, um, that's a short-term fix. We've got, you know, we've got to, we're increasing the fleet by six, right? No, by two.
And that, and that's a discussion we need because two years ago, we decided that we should be funding four a year regardless of what your need is. And that may have to increase to five every year, whatever, but that's another discussion.
More people you get, obviously, in that rotation. I don't think spending, buying, you know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of cruisers in, in one year is a short-term fix. I think that's going to get us back so now that we can get into a planning so that we can keep cruisers. And quite honestly, we were hoping that we could get more mileage out of these towels than we were getting out of the Fords, so.
And you will see the, the majority that we're replacing are Fords.
Yeah, that's, that's always been the goal, right, these Fords.
Exactly.
But once we got into the towels, we'd keep them a little longer, another year perhaps, but a little more miles on them, still get it, attract the trade.
So that a hundred thousand go one twenty-one.
I'm still, gentlemen, I still think it's important that right now, we decide how much, what's the limit you want to spend out of ARA for cruisers? Well, because if, if you say four hundred thousand hypothetically, four hundred thousand, and that only buys six cars.
What's a car fully outfitted costing?
I think I sent that.
You did, but I don't. It's sixty, it's sixty around them, but.
Yeah, but I, I went through that again, and there are, there are things that are in there that can be deleted out of that now. There are several hundred dollars, yeah. Yeah, that's having it down and getting that turnkey, getting it out of Massachusetts, all ready to go.
Team, I think I knew that.
What's that?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, what's that number?
Sixty thousand, six nineteen.
Okay, so that's.
But there's.
Sixty thousand is the number.
Sixty-one thousand.
But that can be knocked back by, I would say, in the vicinity of twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for some things on, yeah, you know, uh, scale window guys. We don't put those on our cruisers, but I know a lot of it.
Can you, can you do that with him?
No.
Yeah, we can.
My, my point is for, is only planning purposes here, so that is a, that is a, that's a good number. Because for planning purposes, you want that number to be twenty-five hundred dollars high, not low.
Yes.
So that's why I was going back to your.
Okay.
So, so four hundred divided by sixty-one.
Well, let's, let's call it four hundred and twenty. That, that rounds it off to seven vehicles.
That's okay, yep.
And that to me is a number I think I could, I could agree to, or seven. John?
But see, here's my, here's my thought. To be honest, I'd like them all to come out of here, you know, in the short term. But that's not a, that's not a go-forward strategy, you know, so we've got to start. You have twenty-four vehicles. You're proposing to have twenty-six, right?
If, if you authorize other positions.
Yeah, okay, so, so, and, so, and you get four years, we've tied. We're trying to hope, or really you're.
Traditionally, we get, uh.
Get three years.
We get between twenty and twenty-five thousand a year. We want to extend these, these Tahoe's to that fifth year. Instead of four, we traditionally look at a four-year rotation, or this, we can hopefully get a fifth, and depending on who the vehicle cycle, you might even get a cut more than that.
So I'm gonna use four years, again, planning purposes. Uh, so we're replacing six and a half vehicles a year. You know, some year because it's gonna be off years, so times sixty-one thousand. We should be budgeting four hundred thousand dollars a year for vehicles. And we're budgeting twenty, two-twenty. That's why we're in this position.
And I guess, everybody, we've had to expand our staff because of, you know what I mean?
I'm not quite.
We, we went for so long. I mean, I remember the day when we buy two and a half cars each year. We get two this year, then the other half, the fourth, we get three of them.
But that's just not sustainable because that, that, that's what's gonna bite us down, down the road. So my thing is unless we're willing to start budgeting that kind of money, then if we are, then I guess, I guess I could support this coming out of ARA.
I think you're, first of all, Paul, I think you're on the high end.
I, I agree, I'm on the high.
Second of all, we gotta remember that just two years ago, we, we weren't, we, we were only budgeting a hundred and twenty-five thousand, something like that for cruisers. And to go from a hundred and twenty-five thousand to four hundred and twenty-five thousand in three years is, is, that's, that to me is excessive, and we've got to rethink that. But I think, I think you're on the high side. I think if we, if we budgeted, if we budgeted three hundred and sixty thousand dollars every year, it bought six cruisers, we had money enough for six cruisers, I think, I think we might wiggle by.
Yeah, well, again.
Especially if we can purchase, if we can purchase six or seven right now with ARA, that gets, that gets rid of the junk and gets, gets, gets the feet on solid ground here for the future. So I'd like to see four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for ARA for seven cruisers. And then leave the two hundred and twenty thousand in there for 23 by four more. And quite honestly, gentlemen, uh, only get the half officer for 23. We'll have to talk about another one for 24. Because, you know, this, you've been adding uh, staff to this. Why is the quality solely responsible every bit of the, the public's, public safety needs? If the state police isn't willing to step up and meet their obligations, somewhere along the way, somebody is not going to get services. And it's, it's, if they're not gonna, if they're not going to participate, they're not going to share in their obligations, which is the same as ours, then you're gonna have to rethink to what extent you're gonna comply police services because quite honestly, I just don't think it's fair to the property taxpayer that they're gonna fund the full cost of the, uh, police services for Hancock County, not covered by their own departments.
You know, and, and I'll just add you one little piece, it said, their, their staff are totally required to be at. So you're right, but you know, the crazy part is when we had the MSA retreat in July, um, this discussion came up, should we approach the state and say, okay, the state police is now gonna do patrol, they're coming back on that. Why doesn't some of that funding come back to, to them? And the argument that came back from about ninety percent of the sheriffs was, we just went through that and we continue to go through that with jails. They, they, you know, they should be paid more than what they're paying for the jails. We'll have that discussion when the jail budget comes up. But they would have control over what, what they're gonna give, and you're still gonna have to make up some of the things, so.
So getting back to the vehicles, I, my numbers, I'll be a high against the planning numbers. So let's just turn that to five years, that, excuse me, a five-year replacement cycle instead of a four. The first example was at four, was at four. You're only dropping down to five point two instead of six and a half, so.
Five point two what?
Vehicles. So twenty-six vehicles, right?
Yeah, but if you've got twenty-six vehicles, it replaces five of them a year, that sets five, you know, that's twenty-five vehicles. You're pretty close to your replacement. And there's factors in there. There are vehicles and whatnot that's gonna go six years. And quite honestly, we've been replacing Fords, which are junk, every four years, so if we're buying a better vehicle, we should be getting five, if not more. So I think, for planning purposes, I think we should see, we should feel confident that we can get five to six years out of each vehicle. And that if we budget four, five every year, we can adequately keep that up so we don't find ourselves with a, yeah, full of junk again.
But if you, if you budget five a year, you're actually going over five years.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And I think, I think on the average, we should be able to go over five years. Because if we're getting a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand out of Fords, we should be getting a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty out of towels.
Yeah, and you're still gonna get more in trade when you trade it in.
That's right.
So, so I guess what I'm fishing for is the number that, because I don't know what the number is, I own a hardware store, I don't run. So.
Well, Paul, again, I think the number is that we agreed to four hundred and twenty thousand for ARA for seven vehicles, and that we agreed to two hundred and twenty thousand as proposed and whatnot for four more in 23. And then in 24, we upped that to three hundred thousand to cover five vehicles.
And I agree with that, Commissioner, with it, because we are targeting that five vehicle because we still have seventy-nine thousand in twenty-two funds, which makes that fifth vehicle, so that works.
Okay, so five, that's, okay, that's wrong. So five times, times sixty, sixty-one. Against planning purposes. So that's three hundred and five thousand dollars. So.
But again.
You're proving your, I'm just trying to prove your number, that's all I'm trying to do.
But you're, you're still on the high side, again, because sheriff is being forced to equip the new vehicle towels with equipment that can be reused in the future because he's going from Ford to Chevy. Is that not correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So at some point, we can reduce the cost of these cruisers because we can reuse the equipment that's in them.
That's if they don't change the model.
And.
And.
Amen.
That's why, that's why I'm saying that we should be budgeting on the high side and not on the low side so that we don't get in this position.
You and I are only five thousand, but I'm not, I'm not gonna squash this field.
Three, three hundred, three hundred thousand would work because you're not factoring your trades also, so three hundred is, is a solid number. As you turn in the vehicles.
Okay, so the sixty-one, that's outright with no trade, so that's not a net number. That's where I'm, that's where I'm going wrong.
Yep.
So, uh, okay.
But the.
Commissioner Clark, I guess I agree now.
Now, as far as the budget's concerned, though, aren't we going to purchase some of these in twenty-two? I'd say ready, apparently, now someone's got three hundred, uh, three hundred cruisers.
Yeah, he's had three hundred ordered, and Mass Black ones ordered.
Oh, gorgeous.
Yeah, and they're scheduled to be delivered. He thought maybe as early as October, but the, the email that I get from Leo, who's still bound, two of those are still bound by, by a bid that he bid on, uh, he's targeting December, so, you know.
But we could, at any point, we could rescind that.
We could, and that's one of the things that's.
My point is that we don't need to, probably don't need to make an adjustment to the proposed budget as far as showing ARA revenue because we just spend that in twenty-two, correct?
If all goes well, yes.
And if, if doesn't, we got December fifteenth, we got up until then to adjust the 23 budget, but. Okay, so here's the deal, and John doesn't like that number. Don't blame that for being a number, John.
I don't like any of it, but.
But it's four hundred and twenty thousand from ARA for seven cars. It's two hundred and twenty left in the budget for 23. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve the full-time officer for 23, but I will, I will agree to the halftime, July first.
So, okay, what you're just throwing on the table, you're, you're buying an extra.
Pardon?
With what you just threw on the table, you're buying an extra car.
No, I'm, I'm buying, I'm, I'm giving them the opportunities by eleven. They need ten for the existing staff. They're gonna have an additional deputy coming on in July. They're gonna need a vehicle for, and that gives them eleven because they're gonna buy seven from ARA and four from the budget. And that will give them eleven vehicles. Now, the problem with that rationale is you just told me there's still seventy-nine thousand left in this year's budget?
That's right, that's correct. So real, really, what I propose is that you buy the ten that we're talking about, and the rest of that gets put into your reserve for future. That's what's gonna help you in next year's budget.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, no, I think that will get you there.
How do we pay for the three, three above the ten? Some of them are gonna pay for ARA.
Three from the budget, from the twenty-three budget, and the fourth one, this is the twenty-three budget, you put in the reserve.
You're just carrying forward. And the seventy-nine from this year, we put into them as well.
And that helps you with that three hundred thousand in twenty-four number that you're trying to get to.
That's, that's a good plan. So you're not gonna spend the seventy-nine this year. You're gonna let that lapse, reserve it to your, to your account. You're gonna buy three out of next year's, two hundred and twenty thousand, let the balance lapse, then in twenty-four, you'll have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars available.
But see, here's the problem I have, where, where, that's, that's great plan. The problem I have is that next year, we're building in that three hundred thousand dollar number, right? Because two-twenty's gonna work this year, but it's gonna need to be three hundred next year. And so, so that's only solving the problem for this year. So, follow me?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared next year to agree to three hundred thousand in that reserve account.
Well, yeah, because by necessity. So I'm wondering if we should soften the blow by maybe going a little higher this year so we don't have to go higher the following.
No, John, listen, by twenty-four, Paul, we're going to have a hundred and sixty thousand in the G account, the reserve account, the equity account.
Yeah.
Which will buy two cars. He needs five. If we continue, if we raise three hundred thousand, well, that's, that's five cars right there, and we don't need five. We, with the reserve account, that's seven cars, he doesn't need seven.
Oh, you're saying, I'm talking raising money, you're talking keeping the balance.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about having, building up that, that, the G account, giving him so much, so, so that we don't have to raise, we don't have to increase the reserve account in the budget. I mean, in twenty-four, that could stay at two-twenty, you still have eighty thousand to, to reserve for, for twenty-five.
We just need to keep the balance at three hundred.
Paul. And, and the balance of three hundred combined?
Yeah.
Right, combined between your G account and your reserve account, your budgeted reserve.
And we also have money in the town contract, three zero one one dash seventy currently shows a balance of just over eighteen thousand. So maybe take that, put that in that reserve account and, and go with that too, so. So is that where we're, we're going with that?
And there, there's no problem with using ARA funds for those kind of.
Somebody started that rule a month ago.
There is no.
Other departments, other departments are buying, yeah. So I'm not sure when, gentlemen, we actually take official action. So I'm not sure when generally we actually take official action to approve.
When he needs to buy. Yeah, I'll let you know, I keep posted, meeting to meeting.
He needs, yeah, he needs to know by general consensus, though, that, that we have, so as he plans, that he has some sense that we're going to agree to that eventually. And I'm saying, by consensus, I can agree to that. If you can, John can, at least he has a majority of the board, general consensus.
Well, I'm in agreement, because I, I know where we have to go, it's been outlined. We just need to get there somehow. And I don't see another way to do it, you know? And I think, you know, for, if I'm sitting in a community, you know, that, for any community in this county, they don't want to see us get there without these funds, because, I mean, it's their nickel. So. I, I, I. It feels like we should take action, you know, soon, so that we settle it, because, you know, things, things can change, you know? Just a gentleman's agreement, I don't think is sufficient here.
I'm prepared, I'm prepared to vote today to spend up to four hundred and twenty thousand from ARPA funds in twenty-two for purchase of cruisers. If you want to make that motion, Paul, I'm prepared to vote in.
Well, I think that should be a, you know, probably an item on a future agenda, just so it's advertised properly, and that kind of thing, but. I would, in concept, I, I agree with it. And if he is not able to get his hands on, on it, by spending that money, we're putting it in, we're not spending that money, we're transferring it to an account to do that, right, which we can do.
I don't think you can. I think that's, that's going to be the hiccup, that you can't take the ARPA funds and put them into a reserve account, spend them five years down the road.
No, 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 that, oh, but that could be construed as doing that.
Well, if you, if you approved four hundred and twenty thousand, you couldn't find cruisers, so we dumped it into a reserve account, a G account.
Yeah.
Kept it there for three or four years, I think would be a violation, so.
Yeah.
I think when, the best case scenario is that these cars be built in October, we purchase them in October, and spend that money directly and get it built.
It's important for him to be able to tell the dealer, this is how many we resulted, to speak for those ten cars, then I'll sell somewhere else, that's the important part.
You can pay for a vehicle before taking delivery, huh?
Didn't we take a check whether this was something last time we even asked?
We did.
You did. Yeah. It's going to be a caravan this time, huh?
Well, I, I thought the idea would be, would it save money to get out of the backyard?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What can they take, eight?
I think so, but probably it's not going to be, it probably would be much more money than flying people down and getting them.
Or putting it on point, so.
Detail, detail. So I think for the record, Paul, by general consensus, you and I can agree to four hundred and twenty from ARPA. The sheriff, he needs, he needs something.
No, we need to, we're in a hole, you know, we're in a hole, especially if we're talking about, you know, things like school resource officers and, you know, I know that's a different fund, but it's still a vehicle that needs to be purchased at some point. I agree in concept, if that's the best way to get there.
John, you.
Yes, I'm not seeing any other way.
John, you can agree to that, is that correct?
I'd better do four hundred and twenty from ARPA, two hundred for community benefits, personally. It's not that I don't want to support.
Oh, I know, I know, John.
To me, well, our funds are supposed to be spent in a certain way. I'm not saying we haven't spent them in the right way, but I also think there's a whole big section that isn't being discussed by us, but I hope that some of those funds, they will come up.
So, John, would you not raise any money in the budget for cruisers, take the two hundreds from community benefits? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I would do two hundred from community benefits, two hundred from, uh, from ARPA.
Oh, wait a minute, tell me again.
I was thinking we do two twenty from ARPA and two hundred for community benefits. And then.
Here's, here's my pushback, I'm not sure it's real pushback yet, just thinking out loud here. My pushback to that is that ARPA funds, deadlines on ARPA funds, there's not deadlines on community benefits. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Statement?
Yeah.
But, and I hesitate to say this in public, but. Today, if you look at ARPA funds, we had a whole wish list two years ago. And we have basically gone through that wish list, and there is still a certain amount of ARPA monies left that hasn't been earmarked for anything. And so, the worst case scenario is, is that we get to the end of this period, and we have to turn back, you know, several hundred thousand because we didn't spend it. And I think if we can, if we can help the taxpayer, property taxpayer in Hancock County, if we can help them by using four hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or something from ARPA, then that's why I'm, I'm solidly behind this. And I'm not opposed, John, to your suggestion, except that I still would like to discuss at some point seriously, getting rid of third party out of the budget and doing a CBA grant each year for third battery request. So we haven't been spending CBA lately, but doesn't mean there isn't a need of it. So anyways.
Well, on that, I think, it's not that I don't like that proposal, I think we're doing the property taxpayers in Hancock County more justice by it coming out of ARPA than out of.
CBA.
That, that community benefits. I mean, should a hole in that argument, I, I.
I think, it seems to me, though, we still have some time to consider John's suggestion and ours, and still give the sheriff what he needs today, and that is concrete assurance that you have enough money to buy ten cars. How, somehow, you go ahead and buy ten cars, somehow, we're going to figure out how to pay for that. We think we have enough options, it's just a matter of how we're going to do that, because quite honestly, I'd like to consider John's compromise. So maybe not to that extent, maybe we can negotiate this as a, you know, three hundred one, something like that. But that's a discussion we can still have at later dates, and still give the sheriff what he needs today.
Yeah, that's a separate, that's a, that's our argument.
All right, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to decide how to fund those ten when he, when he gives us the bills, and that can, I wouldn't wait that long, but we don't, we don't have to settle it today.
No, if I've got the assurance that you, that you committed to ten cars, I can call both those wheelers, the one I got, and say, yes, we want all four of those, and I can tell him down in, in Massachusetts, yes, we want all six, so if that, if that's what we have, I'm good.
Even John can give you that assurance today, right, John?
Thank you.
Yeah, so you're good.
Unanimous as it had to be. But getting back to that, I think we're not going to support the full, the, the.
The purpose simply made, we haven't.
Right, but I'm just trying to make sure that I got my notes right.
Well, this.
So what's the ramifications of, what's the ramifications of that? That's why I don't know.
I'm not funding those?
Yes, well, no, you're funding, say your proposal again.
One year for the deputy.
For the deputy.
I'm sorry. Well, not to fund the full-time officer for twenty-three, but to fund the part-time effective July first. So basically, he ends up with one additional position in twenty-three. It starts, but it starts July first. He wants one and a half, and I just said it's just too big a jump, and I'll, I'll agree to a half today, you know, agree today that he can have a half effective July, and she has so.
Would you agree that Satch proportions do as well, Commissioner?
I don't, that's another whole thing, is, is, you're getting top heavy, you know what I mean, so I.
No, I wouldn't like to get people out on the street, you know, I've got people that need to be administered to by the tenants.
What's, what's the cost of that?
Eighty-four, I'm thinking.
Eighty-four per man?
Total.
Total, eighty-four?
So, if we don't fund this position, why do we need the, don't we only need nine cars?
He needs ten without any new positions, correct?
No, no, here.
No, Paul.
We were talking twenty-six cars total.
Pat said.
Two cars.
And Pat said, a minute ago, he said, even without new positions, he really needs ten cars right now.
So, so that's going to bring us up to twenty-six, is my point.
Total.
Oh, right.
With a new hire, would be twenty.
So, I guess I should ask the question this way. If you hire that, that position, like, is in your budget, do you need twenty-seven cars or do you need twenty-six cars? I think you need twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Okay, so if you don't hire that position, then you only need twenty-five, right?
Well, the, the numbers here, though, are squirreled a little bit when you throw in spares. I mean, spares could be one, or it could be four. I think if you remove the spares out of this.
Yeah, hopefully if we're doing ten cars, there's.
Right, but, for example.
So the, the argument I'm thinking is not to not hire this person, that's not, or to save a car, that's not the argument I'm saying. What I'm saying is, why not hire that person?
The full-time person?
Yeah.
Well, because the salary. The cost, the cost for one and a half cruiser and all whatnot, it's over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Granted, we too, we a little crazy about how we buy cruisers, but nevertheless, the, the balance of that, those two cruisers, is the cost of one and a half. And my, the reason is, is that that is just too big a jump in one budget year, so it's just.
So we're going to have a car for him, or we're not going to have a person?
I don't think so, we're going to have, we're going to, we may end up with three spares instead of still, this, this, this list has two spares, but if you had three decent spares, you'd keep the three decent spares. So that's, I mean, we should take the spares out of this and say, he doesn't have twenty-four, he's only at twenty-two, that's what he needs for his existing staff. But then you, he's going to, you're going to have some spares out there for obvious reasons. And so, but of those twenty-four, you need ten right now to cover those twenty-four positions, those twenty-four cars.
And so, we also, it isn't here because of the contract, you know, the school resource officer, so theory in the summer, we're going to have a little bit of assistance, right?
We hope so.
If at all, false, that place.
But even that school contract, there's going to be a hundred percent of the cost to pay, so we're going to, this.
I just mean in terms of like, whether we're sticking it to the sheriff here by getting rid of the full-time request, you know, there is going to be a little bit of help to some degree, we're hoping.
But you're not going to use this full-time position for school resource?
No.
No.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there is, there is some word of assistance coming.
What do you mean, from, from?
From the school resource.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So he gets, he, if he doesn't have his other full-time, he still gets some help, yeah.
So, so with that argument, why not do the opposite? Why not have a full-time and not a half, and not a part-time?
A half-time is a full-time, it's just when does he get it? He's, he's going to get, he's going to get an officer full-time.
Oh, I see, you're sorry.
It's just a matter of how we budget. So he does get this full-time officer, he just doesn't get it January first.
Gotcha.
He gets it July first, so.
Yeah, okay.
He wants two people, Paul. One of them, he said, I'll hold off until July, one of them, I want it in January.
Okay.
And I'm still, I can't agree to the January, but I can agree to July, so he'll end up at the end of twenty-three with an additional staff person, which he'll have forever in the budget, so.
Would you, as a compromise, would you be willing to consider two in July? So actually, one person increased, but they both not, they both sat in July, instead of one in January, one in July, two officers standing in July?
Well, my, my point is, we're just, isn't that the sheriff's decision? If we fund one full-time, if he decides to go.
You know, that's not his decision, because it has a profound effect on the twenty-four budget. Because personally, I want to see another discussion as we prepare a twenty-four budget, on whether or not we want to give another person. So if, if we allow him to hire two in Ju, July, that means in twenty-four, we don't have no say, he's going to have two additional people in the twenty-four budget. If we give him one in July, then we discuss again next year at this time, whether or not he can have one in the twenty, in the twenty-four budget, so.
The net effect is very profound on.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but I, I wouldn't show a decision.
So what's on the table?
I'm on the, I'm learning. So am I.
Those proposals was to only take the half year out.
No, no.
No, take the half year, take the full.
And my question was, if you're going to cut the full-time one, do I get, I get the half time, do I start deciding some options?
I don't know your department, you know, just, again, I own a hardware store, so how does that operationally, tell us what that does?
What that does is, the goal is to get a sergeant working every shift with a patrol officer, that they are in effect, an extra person, so if one of the deputies is overloaded, wherever they are, that person can help them beyond, be actually out there. I'd rather not have my lieutenants out on the street at this point, we've got too much going on to send them out, you know, to cover car accidents and things like that. There's going to be times when that's going to happen, you know, you're going to be busy, but by having these sergeants, and they're also going to have some supervisory responsibilities, and we've got a lot of young deputies, they need to be taught the correct, the correct way to do things in property.
So right now, you don't have a sergeant on every shift?
That's right, I don't have one. And really, he is really filling a patroler's position, because we haven't had a chance, we're out the full staff now, and he really hasn't had a chance to go out and, you know, do what he should, what sergeant should be doing.
How many sergeant promotions are you?
Well, if we promote two, it's a total of three.
So we. And that gets him pretty close to covering, but that's not going to cover twenty-four seven, which.
That is, that is, we're going to have to.
Maybe we're going to have to help out.
But. I just. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm just having a problem believing that we do such a good job training our officers, quite honestly, they have a good reputation, they do a good job, whether or not they need this kind of supervision.
The liability that's up there now, Commissioner, it's crazy.
And Commissioner, I would remind you that in this year alone, you've lost over a hundred years of experience with this agency.
And I don't want to, I didn't want to say this to the public, but that's what, the other thing that makes me curious, is that do you have supervisory material within the existing ranks? Because you're going to be needing some of that soon, and that decreases that, and you've lost, for different reasons, you've lost some of your, you know, your experienced officers that, that could have filled these roles, and, anyways, I. If, and the other problem I have is too, is that we agreed today to give the sheriff these promotions, and I'm concerned that at some point, when he comes back and says, well, I had to promote two guys to sergeant, so I need two more positions to replace the sergeant.
That's, that's not my intention.
Raise your right hand.
That's not my intention, so.
I'm, I'm only here for two more years, you're here for four, so go ahead and do it, yes, right? Okay, okay. Okay, okay, I, I'm going to reluctantly agree to. Can you?
Yeah.
So John's agreeing promotions and the half, effective July first, and Paul?
I agree with that, I, 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 I'm just worried about the ramifications of the other one, and I don't understand, you know, I, I just don't know your department well enough, is that, you know, does that work? If it does, then I agree.
Can you say?
But I just don't know.
You mean the other one, you say, uh, not, not hiring the other one?
Well, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
You're saying, he agrees with a, you agree with a sergeant promotion and you agree with a, starting the new deputy at, at half-year, that's not a part-time person, that's a full-time.
No, yeah, we start the full-time person July first.
Yeah, so, so you're taking out a new deputy full-time position is what you're referring to.
The one that wouldn't have started January first.
Yes.
Right.
So.
And, you know.
That's my only word.
The sheriff had been fortunate pulling rabbits out of the hat here, whatnot, I still said it's gonna come a day. It just, well, it's gonna go dry with, with finding all these people. We still need Swan Island, we still need school resource, uh, hoping that that's when it comes to working. Now we're talking at least three. But.
Well, what I haven't heard is, does that work for you? That's what I'm, that's what I, you know, that's what I'm, that's my reluctance here.
I will tell you what you have proposed, uh, will make work, I didn't say.
Well, one question, we could put four more deputies on the road today and have enough work for them, but that's not a reality, we'll take whatever you can give us and we'll have to make it work, that's how, that's how it goes, so.
If we had all money in the world, it would not be an issue. We'd tell the state, please go ahead, don't do your special exercises. But no, we'll take care of the people's real needs, but we got taxpayers out there, we've got the answer to those people too, so do you.
Well, okay, so, one thing that we haven't seen is how all of these decisions yet are affecting our assessment, right? We haven't seen that.
And we won't see that today.
No, I understand that, but, you know, I guess that's the real question for me, if, if something like this didn't affect it, then, then I got no problem with it. But if it does, then maybe I come around with your way of thinking, that, that's, that's the part that's, that's hard, that's why I'm so wishy-washy here, I don't.
All right. So, um, any other questions on, uh, sheriff's budget?
Oh, yeah. Are you hungry? You wanna go party or something? Let's, uh, if you're, if you're asking, I wanna get down and talk about overtime.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a twenty-thousand-dollar increase, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so overtime, your budget should be around seventy percent, and you're at eighty-seven with your overtime today. And I'm.
Next year, I had two, and anyone who do, that I've got seventy-two. So we'll have to build.
But you've had two. No, two and twenty-two, yeah, you had two and twenty-two.
We've always, we're, we're always spending that overtime.
How much did you get, seven percent increase?
What, what'd you say?
Plus you have the seven percent increase in pay.
Yeah. I'm just curious if there wasn't, uh, what else drove up the overtime for twenty-two? That we can, that we're going to avoid, especially if we give you full staffing, funding for full staffing and, uh, because it, it seems to me that if you ask, right now, if you have three people per shift, and whatnot, somebody, uh, logs up, not log, what do you call it?
Calls out.
Calls out. You're not easy to replace it, but if you had four per shift, you might be able to run three without replacing, and so as we add people, at, at a point here, we should be able to, especially, you know, third week in January, when a guy calls out, we don't have to replace him, and so I'm just, I'm just, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us avoid a twenty-thousand-dollar increase in, in the overtime in one year.
Well, okay, so, that's, I had, so, we're adding that position back into what we talked about before, affect that number? Cause you're increasing both, right?
I don't think it's a wood in twenty-three, Commissioner, because, uh, those people that were intent, were asking to hire twenty-three, aren't even gonna be trained.
Yeah, I get it.
In twenty-four, they.
Even if this year, the rate we're going, we've spent less than eighty thousand this year, seventy-seven. So I'd like to see a twenty-thousand-dollar increase, I mean, a ten-thousand-dollar increase in twenty-three. Making that to seventy-eight-five. That's my proposal, John.
So, you. He's at thirty-seven now, right? Thirty-seven, one forty-eight now? Well, at June.
No, no, he's, overtime right now is fifty-nine-five. Fifty-nine, almost sixty thousand right now.
Where are you looking?
Well, I, I have an expense summary sheet that was just given to me the other day, it's current.
Oh, okay.
We don't have that information, but.
Okay, I was looking at the June number, thirty-seven.
And I'm, I'm saying that as of today.
That number is fifty-something?
That's sixty thousand dollars today.
Okay.
So we.
So he's gonna.
So he's basically, three more months, he needs to survive on nine thousand dollars, which is a lot too. But he can survive on nineteen thousand, which means that if we increase sixty-eight-five to seventy-eight-five, that's, that'll, that would support him this year. We're hoping that'll cover him next year, that's my hope. Bottom line is, is, is gonna be what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So the risk we as, as commissioners have is that we're going to have to find some money somewhere to cover the, you know, the extra expenses, but let us, let us worry about that.
Yeah.
You guys, you know, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to spend what you gotta spend, overtime is overtime. You can't just stop when your budget runs out, so don't, don't look like we're cutting your budget or cutting your services, we're just making a my crystal ball, something to digest.
So, which is, you're proposing, instead of a twenty thousand, you're proposing a ten thousand?
Right, seventy-eight-five.
That doesn't do anything except affect us really.
Right, right. And at the end of the year, when, in the twenty-three, if your budget is whatever it is, we're going to have to take action to fix it. That means he's got unanticipated funds left over, we'll decide to reserve it maybe, or if he needs money, we'll have to dip into somewhere and find it.
Again, I come back to, I don't know what that bottom number is, so I'm not sure.
John, how do you feel about seventy-eight-five?
Hmm?
Yep. It's good.
Going once, going twice, Paul? Like to see unanimous consensus?
No, I, I, I agree.
Okay.
I, I, I just, it's tough for me to go one way or another here without knowing what that.
Well, probably that you don't know what that law. I wanna move down now to uniforms, uh, this year, you're buying all-new, I'd like to believe that, uh, that would reduce next year, I'd like to reduce that, uh, ten, one-hundred uniform account, I'd like to reduce that to, uh, fifteen thousand.
That amount now, seventeen-two?
Seventeen-two oh five, right? And they're buying completely everybody brand-new uniforms, hopefully that'll, that'll reduce the, uh, the need for replacements in twenty-three. All I'll have is the new offices, which they've had this year, so.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, I'm. Talking small amounts here.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'd like to reduce that to fifty.
But, that's make, that's seventeen-two, that's flat funded from last year, so, which you're.
And the logic behind that again, though, is that this year, they're buying everybody brand-new uniforms, they're gonna, so there shouldn't be replacement costs next year, like they had this year, for the existing uniforms, those uniforms are brand spanking, they should last a year, and.
But, again, I look at, I look at that almost like a a planning number, if you under-spend it, it goes to a reserve account for.
It's not gonna go in reserve, okay? And what happens is, if you, if you need ten thousand for replacements or whatever, and whatnot, you've got another seven thousand in there, of course, a great time to buy a new blazer, something like that. If you need seventeen thousand dollars for replacement for uniforms for your officers, whatnot, we'll give you seventeen, but it gives you some play money, that's the problem with, with letting them have an increase for existing funds, is that you have, you have funds you don't particularly need for the purpose. Gives you the opportunity to spend it for something else. They're talking two thousand, I spend that way too much time trying to decide.
Yeah.
Fifteen, okay with you, John?
Yeah.
Okay, fifteen's the number. I'd like to go down to vehicle repair. Again, just like uniforms, we're buying brand-new cars. Uh, year-to-date, you've spent less than fifty percent of your body sticks. And.
I just ordered sixty tires. Winter tires, so that's gonna be, take care of the lion's share of that. Of that analysis there.
Yeah.
It, it always looks good.
Don't put them on the new, don't put them on the crash, you're not gonna get ready.
But, I'd like to reduce that to forty thousand for twenty-three. It's twenty-dash-zero-zero-five.
Yeah, okay. But that five-year average is, is thirty-nine. So you're saying we're gonna, we're
Yeah.
We should deliver than that?
Geez, I'm hoping with, if we're gonna buy ten new cruisers and whatnot, there's ten cars that are warranty, just that, where, of course, that's half his fleet, brand spanking new. And we don't have those worthless Fords anymore that we're spending a ton of money on, and so I'm hoping that we can save a few bucks in our repair thing. And again, Sheriff, you've gotta spend what you gotta spend, I mean, if a guy breaks down, blows an engine, you gotta spend five grand, you don't have it, you gotta spend it. So it's not, we're not taking away your ability to maintain your vehicles, we're simply trying to.
I get where you're coming from.
Just trying to take, reduce, put forty, I said forty. This reduces the amount we have to raise by taxation, and if we're forced later to, to find some money, then it didn't come from taxation, and it's forty. We'll look for forty, Paul, okay? This, this, uh, I'm down now on computer support, and, uh, geez, I'd like to see that, are you still keeping that summary sheet for all your computer needs that we're asked to get?
I, I am, and I, it's not complete yet, I used, I used one with a ten, ten percent increase on that over last year, I'm still waiting for, uh, those policies to come out. So I don't have a complete share.
You know, this might wanna be a discussion for another meeting, we could spend some time on it, but, I'd like to see how much is being spent out of the sheriff's budget that should be identified in the IT budget. You know, for twenty-five years, the sheriff's department has been solely responsible for their own IT needs and expenses, but now that we have an IT department, I'd like to see, I'd like to sit down with Chuck and his, and his help and the staff, your staff and whatnot, go through all our IT expenses and whatnot, and see how we can, doesn't mean we'll save anybody, but it means that we identify it in the right place, of course, we have Chuck, who is our IT specialist, blessing our IT costs, so.
And, and, and we've done that, uh, in the twenty-two budget, a lot of that came, was already transferred into the lion's share of this still.
Right.
That, that's the lion's share of that cost that you're seeing there.
And, that's out of discussion, because if our spillman specialist is in the IT department, maybe the spillman support should be with that type, that spillman specialist, so, you know, I don't wanna talk about that today, but I think that's, that's the gist of what I'd like to.
I'll fill that, I'm out there, I'm not comfortable giving up control of spillmen, because if we didn't have spillmen in the past, our ICC would be in a blank account. That's the only thing that kept that here in account, because I wouldn't get the.
I would, I would suggest a thing to jeopardize that.
Yeah.
So, what you're talking about is this twenty-dash-one-hundred line?
No, I'm talking about the thirty-dash-three-twenty-five.
Here, so the thirty-four.
Okay.
Right, okay. Those are contractual software.
Yeah.
Perhaps so.
And Pat has a summary sheet, Paul, that gives us every year, that shows us where every dollar of this needs to go. I'm not suggesting touching that number, I'm just saying I'd like to, I'd like to see the justification for that.
But, your proposal doesn't, just moves it out of one department to another, it's not doing anything.
Right, and, and, and that's more of just a, a management thing, surely.
Yeah.
What, uh, what, thirty-three-twenty-five, tell us again what that's for? Uh, five-twenty-five, your criminal investigation report, what's that expense, what's that about? Michelle?
It would be for all of the, like, um, they have a software program that they use, and then also it goes for, like, you know, their kits for the cruisers, like the lifting kits, the gel kits, all that stuff comes out of that account. Um, and also any drug expenses that have to be sent away for testing is coming out of that line now.
Uh, so, we're gonna leave the vehicle reserve account in two-twenty, correct?
That's what I thought.
Wait, yeah, okay, well, that's all I had as far as promise on this budget.
So, I come back to this. Vehicles, what you've given us in here is, is some of the stuff you're not gonna get, this was just what their proposal was, right?
Oh, watch that.
Like you talked about.
Right.
Decided, yeah.
We're going back to this money in and money out. Nothing to talk about.
Well, yeah, there's nothing to talk about, but if you don't have an officer or a deputy for one of the positions, let me have him come in.
Right, but, but there's nothing in that, uh, that has, that has an effect on taxation, because whatever services they get, we bill them, we give reimbursement for them. So if he doesn't have a deputy, he doesn't spend the money, he doesn't get it, it's the same dollar.
After through the civil process, we left the revenues at what we have gone to this year, a hundred thirty-five thousand. And with the increase from sixteen to forty dollars plus the county fee, twenty-five dollars on it, we should be doing much, much better. The only increases that I had in there are salaries, and that's contractual, and five-hundred-dollar increase in fuel. Everything else is zero.
What is there? Summary now, I have to blank. There is a. There is a reimbursement that we could apply for and get that we're not getting by statute. Is it deductions?
No, we haven't. We, we charge them when we serve those papers, Vicar and everything.
Yes. Counting fee, but I thought you agreed to that at the last meeting, too.
We agreed to one, there's two, and we agreed to one last time, but not the other. Which one didn't we agree to?
We agreed to the twenty-five dollar increase, which accounts, which adds the base cost. I think the question was, do we charge for Vicar workers' comp and stuff? And I think I said I didn't, we do, so I missed.
But there's something else that we can charge for that we're not, and you said that I wanted to rely on how much I'm charging.
No, that was me disagreeing with adding that twenty-five dollars on because I just thought going from sixteen dollars to sixty-five dollars was a hell of a jump.
We did it despite.
You, you voted unanimously to add that twenty-five dollars on, or we like the twenty-five dollars on.
We added it despite his recommendation.
Yep. We differed on the amount, I think.
Yeah, the sheriff was trying not to be as greedy as we were, basically, right?
Ah shit, I don't know why I'm not better prepared for this, but, okay. There is, we should generate much more revenue with those increased fees and. But the difference is still almost forty thousand. Not that, not that I insist we balance, but.
Well, if you took, we've averaged between twenty-one hundred and twenty-two papers, twenty-two hundred papers for the last five years. If you take that, drop, add there and add on the difference between sixty-five dollars now for a baker and sixteen dollars, what's that, fifty-five? Forty-nine dollar increase times two thousand, or twenty-one hundred, how much is that, Commissioner?
It's ten thousand.
Right. Count them on that, isn't it?
You take it fifty times two thousand, it's ten thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty-one hundred papers.
Twenty-one to twenty-two hundred, say twenty-one hundred on the long side.
Yeah.
And we've increased, what did I say, forty-nine dollars, is that right? From the sixteen, yes.
Yes.
And actually, some of them increased more than that, the EHS paper.
What is that?
I'm sorry?
What's twenty-one hundred times forty-nine?
Hundred and two thousand nine hundred.
Yeah.
Is that, you're, you're looking at it, that kind of an increase?
Should you reflect on that?
Yes. If that's the case, why aren't we reflecting? I mean, you've only increased this, you haven't increased it at all.
In perfect times, Commissioner, I would agree with you a hundred percent. We can't control still what the court's doing. We may not, that's an average. I was just cautioning you that.
Wait a minute, whoa, we have increased our fees.
Correct.
Yep. Even if we decrease the amount of papers we serve and whatnot, there's a substantial increase. And.
You could budget at least half of that.
I was going to say you could budget something.
And make it balance.
If we, if we still serve twenty-one hundred papers in twenty-twenty-three, with the increase that we've got, that'd be a four hundred thousand dollars. Now, we're thirty-seven thousand dollars short of balancing this account. Thirty-seven, that makes it, that makes it wash, which is a nice goal. And I'm saying that thirty-seven thousand dollars additional revenue this year, next year, over this year's revenue and whatnot, is unreasonable considering it could be a hundred thousand. And that makes, that makes the civil process budget balance. I propose that we do that. I mean, why wouldn't you increase something? Given the substantial increases.
We haven't met this, we haven't met this year's budget yet, we're not going to.
Not, we're not even close to this year's budget.
Wise man always talking, when I was doing my budgets, I don't know where that came from, but that will lie to yourself.
So, so you're, you're saying to the, the budget for this year.
As of the fifteenth of this month, we have forwarded forty-eight thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents towards a budget of a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Civil process revenue. Okay, the budget is a hundred and thirty-five.
And you've collected fifty?
Okay, and the five-year average is one nineteen. So we really can't add.
Wait a minute, there's going to be, there's going to be an issue here. What's, what's going on? You only, only raised fifty thousand, what's, what's happening? Is this unique to twenty-twenty-two? Because if you've got a.
It's the courts. It's the courts.
We can't, we don't have the civil days to get them to get these cases in.
So you're serving less.
My money is not, my money is not getting people to court, my money is getting people served.
Correct.
But there's no court days. Yeah, there's no court days. They're trying to get all the criminal cases done, so there's not, there's not as many civil dates available for small claims, divorces.
Didn't this, didn't this start two, three years ago with COVID?
Oh, yeah.
So why is that, why is our five-year average still a hundred and seventeen thousand?
A hundred and nineteen.
What else? The five-year actual is eighty-seven thousand.
Oh, that's the budget average.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. What is the five-year actual?
It's eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
So the best we could do is, is, we really can't take that twenty-one hundred because that's, that was a high figure, you said that. So we, the only way to solve this math problem is to know what the five-year number is, not the five-year dollar amount.
I'm going to say this is, is a crystal ball. I guess, I give up, I guess.
Well, I want to hear your thought. Well, my thoughts of this is, this is the first year of really a new program. So if we exceed the hundred and thirty-five thousand by fifty thousand, that's revenue surplus, and that's going to show here, that's still going to come to the county.
Okay, so here's another way. You, you, we went from, what was the fee before?
One fifteen. Oh, the fee, sixteen dollars.
And we went to?
We went to forty, and then we had twenty-five on top of that, so it was sixty-five dollars. That's the base price, not county mileage and all the other.
Yeah, so we really can't, so what we need to know is a percent change from sixteen to, right, just so we have a math problem here.
Except that you don't know, like they, they have said, they don't know what their numbers are going to be.
No, but what we can do is just base it off that, that what he thinks is going to be this year. That's all I'm trying to do.
The problem is that if we don't do that, if we don't take a chance and hope that we're going to increase that, and we leave that, and we end up getting a fifty thousand dollar, we raised a hundred and eighty-five instead of a hundred and thirty-five, and we've taxed the people for fifty thousand dollars they didn't need to pay back for them. Because you can't give the fifty thousand back to them specifically in that budget year, but you tax them. So that's why every time that we can add revenue, even if we're taking a risk, we reduce the amount raised by taxation. But knowing that our five-year average is only eighty-seven, and we only raised fifty so far this year, I mean, at that rate, you're only going to, you won't be getting seventy-five thousand.
So, so basically, that's a three hundred percent change, okay? So you thought that you're gonna, your estimated for twenty-twenty-two was basically sixty-one thousand, right? You're at forty-eight now, okay? Right?
No, if they'd had this year's, next year's rates.
This year.
This year.
Yeah.
They would, they would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety thousand dollars.
No.
Yes, because you're going to add forty-nine dollars to every paper they did serve, which is, which is an increase over, sixty-five is an increase over what? Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Yeah. So, no, you've got, it's even more than that.
Sixteen and some of them was eight, and the EHS paper was rate though.
If they, if, if these rates had been in effect in January of twenty-twenty-two and whatnot, they would have had well over a hundred thousand dollars revenue to date.
I, I know, but my point is, where, his estimate for twenty-twenty-two is sixty thousand dollars. He's done forty-eight now, right? Okay, so if you take that sixty thousand dollars, we had a three hundred percent increase in, you know, from sixteen to sixty-five, again, I'm being conservative, a three hundred percent increase. So if you increase that sixty thousand by three hundred percent, you get a hundred and eighty.
You want to up that to one fifty and?
No, I, no, where I'm going is, I think we're at the number that, that Mr. Clark is looking for. You're trying to balance that budget, right?
Well, I'm, oh, I, I think that's a, that's a, that's a great goal, it's nice to say a civil process pays for itself, but I've always said that that's a service we need to provide, no matter what it costs.
So my point is that we can conservatively do that.
We need thirty-seven thousand dollars to balance the budget exactly.
Yes.
And so if we added thirty-seven to, we added thirty-five to one thirty, and raised that to one seventy, we're pretty good.
You could take that revenue. You could take that revenue conservatively up to a hundred and eighty-three. You only need to bring it to one seventy-three, one seventy-four. Which I think you can conservatively do, that's the point.
All right, just, just do it. Let's make that, round it off to one seventy-five.
And we're not, we're not making.
You don't have to.
I think that we're taking into all the factors the sheriff has outlined.
We're not, we're not telling you, you just serve twenty-one hundred papers, we're only telling you, you serve the same number you serve next year as you serve this year, and you'll make a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And I can say this, if there's a couple of my expenses that I propose, what you put in for numbers is what you decide to put in for number. We'll get, we'll do our best to get that.
Okay, I'd like to go with one seventy-five.
Seventy-five, let's go.
Is there a downside to that? I don't, I just can't prove it.
No, because you, you said it more, more succinctly than I did. If you take his, his this year's numbers and increase that by the, by the three hundred percent, which is the increase in his fees for next year.
Would be higher.
That's right, that's where we are. So I think, I think that's a good explanation of why we can justify one seventy-five.
Yeah, and, and again, being on the conservative side, your number is ten thousand less than what this.
Be nice to see that over two hundred thousand. Lightfold.
Okay. You're not saying a downside.
The only downside is if you don't generate the revenue, then your budget's short, and you're going to have to find that money later. That, that's.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. And that, again, that's something we will help you do. You're not responsible for finding that money in the year we've got to. Yeah.
Who are we going? Five forty-six, not cash flow. The only increases I have there are contractual. But one thing I would like to talk to you about is under revenue. I've got a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer. I didn't realize when I put this together that they had not transferred the twenty-five thousand committed to this year's budget. So if, if in fact that gets transferred this year, and it's not necessary to do it, that account is healthy enough that we do not need to transfer that money this year. If we did transfer, I would not, I'd only have eleven thousand and something like that to put in here. So what my, what I'm asking or recommending is don't transfer that twenty-five thousand this year, transfer it in the next year's budget. And that, the reason that is is because the, you know, the forfeitures aren't what they usually pay. And we do have some stuff in the pipeline, but nothing to make up that difference. So my recommendation is if you, you're fine with the expenses, I would just ask the twenty-five thousand not to be transferred in this year's budget and transferred in the next year's.
So for this budget, we have to remove the transfer request here, right?
No, I'd leave it in, leave it in there and just, so that money is in reserve right now, there's thirty-two.
In the G, in the G M?
Yes, thirty-two or thirty-five thousand, I don't have that number in mind.
And what you're saying is that this budget is going to be in the black without making the transfer?
Yes. We're going to fine.
Because we haven't had an agent down until we join the year, that's not amazing. That would be like a book, so.
Makes sense?
If anything else, Tim.
Yeah.
You have another account today?
Jay. I mean, don't, on all the changes you adopted with the process this year, would you like me to back make those changes and update them in there? Or is finance doing, Atkins always did it, sorry.
If we can work together, I'd be good.
Can we get into Trio still and update those changes now?
I don't know about Trio, but I can make the updates in the spreadsheet, which I have from. I have the, I have the spreadsheet now from the point where Scott did this part.
Thank you. So this spreadsheet, I know this has nothing to do with Sheriff, but this spreadsheet is, you're making, this whole thing is a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
The parts to the number that I keep saying that I'd like to know, right?
Which is it?
Yes. So what's that number?
They, they haven't put changes in there yet.
No, but I mean, what's the number before?
I don't know what number you want to know.
The overall.
Nineteen point seven three.
You asked.
I printed it, I printed it.
Almost one point four, one point three eight, I think it is.
Is that for the whole county?
Yeah. I printed it before I came.
We haven't, we haven't talked about any transfers yet, so, I mean, there's, that's, isn't it really not talking apples to oranges? You pay them a nineteen, it gets classed as an increase. Wow, you want to sit back down? But you're not, I mean, it, it sounds fair because we haven't done any trails for this year.
Yeah. And I've only been through this once, so that's why I can ask them. And, well, we weren't at that magnitude last year.
We may have been before transfers. I mean, you know, at any time, you can go in and look at that number, you know, before you even propose it to the BAC, and it's just a number. I mean, we still got a lot of work to do on that, so whatnot. And the other thing is, is that last year, I think, remind me, John, I don't think we did transfers until after we got it back from the BAC. We won't cancel it until they got it back. So we may send them a, you know, a fifteen percent increase budget, say, okay, we'll let them know. If they do, because they don't have authority over telling us how much to.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, we, last year, the discussion was, do we send them a real number or do we send, you know, I like that, I like what we did last year. I think it makes more sense.
All right. We just have one more from me, the pound eleven to jail. I increased the county's portion of the four percent if we can go statutorily. We're still hopefully sure up in balance in that budget. I had a conversation yesterday with, I can't think of the last thing, it's down to AM and A, asking the question of can we exceed the four percent cap? And can, the problem is if we increase it by more than that, we have to come back to that, whatever that figure is of four percent for the following year. So you make the whole bigger than it already is. What she suggested is that we go back, and Timmy and I have already had a conversation about this, go back in and look, there may be some expenses that we have not attributed to APRA that can be shown as revenue. And I think with filling some of the shifts with overtime and that, we're looking at what the possibility of a person and a half to begin with, not looking into supplies and other things that we, that we have in view, but that's going to, that one can be created.
That's a quick fix for one year.
Right.
The year after APRA is gone and whatnot, you've got a million, you've got a one and a half stamp limit hole.
And, and this is the hole we've been digging out from when prior boards would not increase.
What about the, what about the years that we didn't tax the limit?
Or at all?
They call it, they call it the savings account there. They don't, they don't honor that anymore?
They call it, they call it the, the savings account there. They don't, they don't honor that anymore?
They do, I just don't think it applies to jail. I think that four percent is a different, is a different standard.
Four percent.
Yeah. Because this is, this is a huge hole, and the hole is created by the state, not us.
Well, the state created some of that hole, but some, you know, this is, we've had this conversation on a number of things. We've got to now take a big bite. We should have been just nibbling along. I mean, some prior boards did not increase the three percent, which the number was at the time each year. Now, you know, you didn't go three percent here, you didn't go three percent here. I know God, it has to be at least three or four years where they didn't increase it at all. So you go behind that much more each year. And thank God we're not in Cumberland County. Cumberland County, uh, because of their staffing shortage, has lost the ability to house federal prisoners. And after the Sheriff Joyce projects, that's a two and a half million dollar shortfall. Ouch. So we do everything we can to make, to get as close as we can with the staff that we need to have, so that we can generate the revenue that we do generate.
He believes so. If it gets bad enough, he just shuts the deal.
He made that comment.
Yeah, I agree.
Where are those gonna go?
So.
They're gonna have one sound full. He'll be in it.
That revenue that you're talking about. Okay, I'm looking at the jail revenue, right? It's one word, actually, I'm talking about.
Federal authority?
Yeah, that's, that, that, that federal money is carried in there, right?
That's good show of federal revenue.
I'm sorry to make this so torturous.
No, no, no.
This is the only way.
If you don't ask questions, you're not gonna know.
What was the question?
So the court, the total revenue, right?
Right.
Federal board, I'm sorry.
It is basically what proposed here is, is.
One twenty-four.
No, two hundred, two point nine million for total.
No, two point one.
Can I get to the next page?
Oh, next page, yeah, sorry.
Tax cap.
Yeah.
The tax cap is the one.
Tax cap.
For revenue is two nine, two nine seventy-four.
Yeah, and of that, federal is.
One twenty-four.
Plus transport, thirty sixteen.
What's it mean?
We transport them back and forth to Bangor, to court, or.
They're paying us mileage and also get, get increased the fee that we get officer rates and mileage rates now to run the bank, or we take it and make them.
So that's a thirty-six hundred, what you're talking about.
It's not much, but it's, they're paying our.
And the federal boarding is.
Top line, three hundred twenty-four thousand. Twenty-four, yes, five oh two.
Yeah. So, explain, okay, now the tax cap, that's a two point one.
That's what's being raised by taxation.
Okay, and then we have to make up that, where's that difference paid at?
That comes from the federal board, it comes from, uh, county jail operating fund is five hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, employee contribution is eighty-one thousand, so all of those, it's total.
Make up that difference.
Make up, theoretically make up that difference.
Right now, you're showing a four hundred thousand dollar deficit.
Oh, showing more than that. Almost eight hundred thousand, almost eight hundred thousand, over eight hundred thousand.
You've got two point nine in revenue, you've got three point two.
No, no, about three.
Hundred.
That's hundred, start at three hundred.
We'll scroll around, go back and look and see what else we can find that can be attributed.
To Papa, straight face.
You know, and part of it, you know, Timmy will bring that to your attention, you know, CCA funds, the amount of that money that has to be used for community corrections is ridiculous. If we could, if we could put all of that money on, instead of twenty percent, or thirty percent, is it ten?
Yeah, thirty percent.
Thirty percent, if we put just ten percent of that to programming, which would be sufficient for us, and be another twenty percent that we would be able to use. Those, that, that has to be specially designated for certain programs and certain salaries. You know, you don't have any flexibility with that. And they increased that when the new bill was passed, that increased what the state's contribution was from eighteen point eighteen point nine to the twenty point two or twenty-one point two. They increased that to thirty percent that you have to use. Which is a lot of money.
We looked at, I mean, this is, over the years with the whole share system, we've created an actual jail budget. This would have cost to run a jail. You can see, you look at the Trio, we're not, some were over, but this is actual, there's no fluff in our budget now, in the jail budget. So there's really nothing we can.
Oh, it sounds like.
We can take, I mean.
Yeah, and we didn't.
Yeah, point medical, and then if we change something, if we took, like, we tried, over the years, we transferred some money, we split, now we split the heating costs fifty fifty instead of sixty forty, but if you take us up to the jail, that's just going to another department to pay for. I mean, I really see that is employee medical, and when I set it five fifty right now. I five year, you know, it's five fifteen, but you know, we've had some serious medical, staff medical issues over the last couple of years that just pushed that up. I mean, we roll the dice and drop that back a hundred thousand and, and to, we want to show a balance budget. Two thousand twenty-two was two hundred eighty thousand in place of employee medical. Look at the five-year average, yeah, we were five fifteen. We work with the, you know, propane and electricity again. That's just, that's just a movement for us, an actual cost, it's gonna just, we can shut up the jail budget, which we discussed, but, you know, that's a hundred thousand, that would just go back into, you know, I don't, I don't know.
So is it accurate to think on your overtime, where you're gonna be for the end of the year, three hundred and fifteen, around that?
You know, and left what you can have some people.
For.
Set that down.
Well, right now, estimated for actions for overtime is ten and eighteen thousand. What's the shape of this? But is there a, is there, I mean, is there surplus in your full-time salary account for people and vacancies that you pay?
Yeah, I mean, that's the big, we're down three officers right now. And hopefully, next meeting, we're gonna have two more full-time officers to fill in those.
What we don't have is a balance sheet that tells us how much extra they got left over in the salary account that they had had to use in overtime.
Well, you can sort of guess that by by the, you know, looking at the actual estimated versus the budgeted. Let's call it a hundred thousand.
We don't have to estimate it. We got a balance sheet right here.
Fifty-eight percent of our.
Right now, right now, the, we ought to be at seventy-seven percent. And a full-time. Right now, we're almost twenty percent below in the.
Salary.
No, wait a minute, Corrections Office is forty-seven. We're thirty percent below of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar budget line, budget line. So thirty percent of, of a hundred and.
A full-time line, try to give me that, isn't it?
No, Corrections Office is full-time line, and it is, uh. Whoa, 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 whoa.
One or two.
Nine, oh, nine hundred and fifty. So we're thirty percent. We've got a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar unexpended surplus right now, year to date, in the, in the Corrections line.
Yeah, but it's being eaten up by someone.
That's my point. And then, when you look at the three hundred and eighteen thousand overtime, you say, oh my God, we're gonna go and tow it, but we have two hundred and seventy of that is already saved in, in the full-time. So you need all the figures, not, I mean.
Yeah, well.
It's like statutory cardiac arrest.
Here's my, I look at this jail budget, and I, I'm not sure there's a lot that we can do here.
That's why I don't think it.
Yeah, yes, so.
It's just an observation.
Frustrating me is the revenue side. Okay, and what I, what I don't understand is the difference between, like, the, the jail cap is statutorily, that, basically, they're saying you should be able to run your jail for, for two million one hundred twenty-six.
I'd like to think, I'd like to think that's what the rationale was, but it wasn't.
But no.
No, the rationale is that you, 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 you run your jail on this amount, or you can suffer, because that's where it's been now for ten, twelve years. They don't care what it costs to run that jail. This has been the argument, back when they had the border corrections. You know, they, they give you money enough for some of your operations, they wouldn't give you anything for, for infrastructure repairs. So anyways.
So the whole purpose is, is to limit, eliminate the money that taxation has to pay to run the jail.
The first year I was sheriff, go ahead. I was gonna say, the first year I was sheriff, we had a very sizable amount in money in reserves, and the control panel went, it was forty-six thousand dollars. And at the time, with the border corrections, when you had those types of repairs, you sent the bill to the state and they paid it. Nope, we're not paying it anymore. So there goes the money of forty-six thousand dollars. God, it seemed like the first day I was here. And they replaced the border corrections with, with now this, this jail tax cap and whatnot, which is just bad, because now you don't have anybody to complain to.
Sounds like it's worse.
Yeah.
It will, but could maybe, because you don't have anybody to complain to now. They just send you a check and say, that's all you're gonna get, and.
The legislature sets them out, and it, and it's split based on inmate days. And, you know, and, and part of the problem too, let's go back, was it last week we were talking, we had fifty-four people in jail, take a wild guess on how many of them were sentenced.
Over. Yeah. That's like three.
Two.
And so that means that we're housing probation holes, precinct bail, drug court.
And that's aggravated by the fact that, that we need like six trustees at the jail, just to operate laundry, kitchen, cleaning and all that. And those have to be sentenced low inmate, uh, low risk inmates. And it would be wonderful if we could do some community projects, taking some of these inmates out, let them earn some good time, and doing projects that are around the community.
I haven't been, I haven't been, it makes it similar for three years.
If you look, I think that maintenance has picked up one position or half a position, full time. That's what we used to provide from the jail for trustee service. They don't have us, they need that person. That's why, that's why that money's come back on, on their budget, if they pass that person, because we can't stop, get their needs.
So explain to me this two mil, on the first page, okay, that's the, the jail tax cap, right? That's two million one twenty-six.
From you, that's from your taxpayers.
That's from our taxpayers. That's the most that we can raise without taxation.
Without getting a whole tax cap, right?
You can exceed that four percent for a year. So if you go, say you go six percent, whatever that number is, let's, let's say the, well, no, let's not say it. The following year, you have to go back to what that baseline was. You can't start from where you ended up with that six percent. So we, we, based on that, we have to increase that four percent. Well, that was.
Increasing not to.
But that was increased two years ago by the legislature, because when the L D one was originally passed, it was three percent, and it been that way really long. And, you know, this is my eighth year sheriff, and we've been down every year, sheriff's been down with a tin cop cell and pencils, trying to get money out of state to pay what they should be paying, and they don't.
Okay, so that's the most we can raise in taxation.
And I think if you go, if you raise that, you're not gonna, I don't think you're gonna raise enough to make a difference. Does that make sense? Right now, four percent raise is eighty thousand dollars, so that's another twenty, so that's twenty thousand. That really, is it worth raising that cap, playing that game when we got a.
That's exactly why, that's exactly why I'm asking this question, because you're raising, and if you flip the page, you're really raising two, two point nine something.
Right.
Okay, so if you were able to raise more here, that would create, that would shrink that deficit, right? So my question is, what are the ramifications of doing that?
The following year, you get punished to be held. That hole that you're, we're short right now is increased, because let's say we were able to increase that to two million five hundred thousand.
Yeah, let's say we.
We can go whatever that percentage is, okay? We can go to that. So next, the following year, we have to go back to what the number was there, two point one million, and not start at two point five. So you're already four hundred thousand dollars in the hole before you get your added expenses.
Oh, so you're saying if you go more than that cap, then the next year, you start off at what?
Two one again.
Two one again. Sand laws doesn't count.
I don't really have any one, that just rises, isn't a lot.
And, you know, if you, if you predicted that your costs were gonna be less, that would be a risk you, you could take, but you know they're not gonna be less.
Well, no, we know they're gonna be higher, that's why I wanna.
So, I mean, you wouldn't want to start at two, at two one, when you could be starting at two five.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we worked well with the courts and reduced that population to the COVID. They worked with us and gave stays and stuff, threw them out. So our bed days were down a little bit during COVID. And now this year, they make the, they do the bed days, as turns out, to get this, um, state funding, so.
You get punished for, for.
Yeah, so we, you know, other counties got a million, you know, get five, six hundred thousand dollars more, where we get pennies, and there's, because they raise that money, there's not gonna be, I don't think we'll be able to write supplemental funds, you know, and rattle a ten cap, looking for money from the state. I don't think that's gonna be possible.
No, I don't think we will.
What they gave us is what every county's got, you know? So that's how it is.
Well, you know, and I, my own personal beliefs that the legislature does that, because there's a high percentage of legislators that down, and they don't want to run a jail free.
Well, I think.
If we don't find you, you've got to figure out a way to either pay for it or get more people out of jail.
I think they need to come on the tour that I went on, to be honest, you know.
No, it's, it's, when you got MMA down there saying, I don't care what your situation is, you're gonna limit the amount that you tax our taxpayers, that you can't fight that battle, and that's the problem. And that's, it does, their decision to hold the line is not based on rationale, it's based upon, upon philosophy. Philosophy is to stop taxing our taxpayers.
You want to dream they got a budget, there's state mandates, that we have to do, they tell us, we need people, so we don't have to have, they tell us, you know?
So that's to have these.
We have to have these people here, but if they don't help fund it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Appreciate it.
So what you want us to do with our budgets that come back with this, to find this range without.
What do we want you to do?
My trans house, no.
Well, I mean, because we spent every nickel we had, and we came, you know, we're gonna be running older vans, and she, we have no money for a van. We spent all of our revenue for the washing machine and for the convection oven, you know, all that stuff was pulling out of our, our revenue to.
Look, you know what, you know what, you know what we have available, so you guys are gonna sit down and figure out what you, what you would suggest to us, we did, to help you get, get to cover that. I mean.
I hate to suggest, our, our funds, because that's just gonna, I mean, are there, are there one-time purchases, purchases that need to be paid that?
No, no real major purchases.
Because it's all operations.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I say use APRA funds, but everybody knows that every dollar you spend from APRA is just going to increase the hole later, but nevertheless, you don't, you don't not spend it, it's there, setting there, waiting, it's, it's appropriate, so.
But I think in, with they, I don't think we could, I don't think we could really ask more than seven, eighty thousand dollars.
Well, there's, there's eighty of the, three hundred. Keep digging. I mean, you want us to sit down with you and go through every, every line?
I do not, we, we've been doing that.
You tell us what you think we can do.
Well, I mean, the purpose of what we're doing now is to try to identify that, right?
But there's no sense for me to ask for the county to involve the electricity or the propane, right? I mean, because that just put, now that should put the money another voucher. I mean, it's still.
And really, to show a true budget, you should reflect some of those costs in that budget.
This is the one exception to that, Scott. The exception is, is that we're not capped at how much we can tell Tennessee it's gonna spend for propane. The exception is, is that we're not capped at how much we can tell Dennis he's going to spend for propane by statute. And that's the difference, is that if we put it in another department that we have complete control over, we can put a true revenue number on that. Because it makes no sense, if you're going to spend eighty, eighty thousand dollars a year for propane and, and, and the state says you won't spend, you're only going to, you get fifty to pay for it, that makes no sense, so.
Yeah, but then you're, you're artificially lowering what it costs. His point was, this is what it costs to operate the jail. That's a very poor number.
But you've got two choices, you're going to reduce that by three hundred thousand, some expense. Or you're going to find alternative expenditures, because the bottom line is the same number. Whether you reduce it or whether you cover it somewhere else and you don't show it anymore.
See, one of the things that, that you just said, just popped in my head a previous board. They wanted everything possible and more put into that jail budget, thinking that they're going to go to the state, the state's going to give them more money. And I don't know how many times I said, you're not going to get that, it just isn't going to happen. I don't know how many times I've listened to, the state needs to be carrying that fair share. Oh yeah, I agree with that, go, go get it, go figure out how you're going to get it, you're not. So that's when we started taking some of that propane out, some of that electricity and putting it somewhere else.
Yeah, but this is, this is what it costs to operate the jail, based on all those prior discussions. If you take propane out of here and you put it into commissioners, this room, then you haven't saved any, no. The only thing you've done is misrepresented his actual operating cost. And I think it's important to maintain his actual operating cost, because if there's ever going to be an argument, we need to, you know, to do something, it probably never happens. But it's important that.
You've got to pay that, how are you going to pay that if you leave it in the jail budget?
Right.
How are you going to pay that propane bill if you leave it in there and you're capped at how much you can raise? We're not capped in Dennis's account for propane. So if, if push comes to shove, there's no other way to cover that. We take it out, we put it in Dennis's budget, and we increase the county's tax. Because that's what should happen. They should do away with this, this mandatory statutory tax cap from the state. We shouldn't be allowed to decide what we're going to spend on our jail. And that's the problem, we're not given that authority. They're not telling you how much you can spend in the sheriff's department, they're not telling you how much you would spend in propane, but they're telling you how much you can spend in jail. And that's, that's the problem, because they're telling you a number that is unreasonable, unworkable. And they continue to add these mandates on with no funding, and I'm, I'm just going to throw this out there. Depending on what happens in November, if there is a change in administration in August or November, I will almost bet. That the monies that we receive to run our M A T program will disappear, which means a nurse and the docs of the meds and the counseling, those kinds of things. Because the opponent, from the current governor, is not a fan of that. So I would be willing to bet a nickel that that will go away somehow. And that was my biggest fear when we originally accepted that money.
So, 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 Phil, what, what you're saying is, there's a deficit in here. We can't, this has to balance, is what you're saying.
We've got to pay those bills. If he spends that amount of money and whatnot, and we're three hundred thousand dollar short, we've got to find, you know. It's going to be, yeah, we've got to cover that expense somehow. And you can do it in advance with pre-planning, or you could sit there at the end of the budget year and whatnot, faced with a three hundred thousand dollar deficit, and say, oh my God, where are we going to, we get this money from? So.
If you used community benefits.
We've done stuff like, and there's no good answer, Paul, because the best answer is, is to allow us to raise sufficient funds under taxation to cover the cost of the jail.
So what are you advocating that we do this year?
I'm, we'll be back. I'm, I don't think that's the decision we make today from this table. Tim knows exactly what our options are. He's going to have to go back, he's going to have to figure out what he wants us to do. Do you want us to pay your propane? Do you want us to pay your electricity? Do you want us to give you money from CBA? You know what, you know what, what our limitations are, you know, our availability. Back and tell us, how you want us to cover that three hundred thousand? And that, that will continue the discussion, because unless you want to, well, so yeah, with Tim and go through every item and every expenditure and every proposed, it's gone.
Because they've done that, so they're expensive.
We had this conversation, what, Monday? When Mike, when the sheriff and I said, that's, we're having the same, but we just wanted to make sure we was being directed to do what we need to do before we come here with proposals and, and all of a sudden, now.
Paul, Paul wants to, I was going to cover this three hundred thousand, I'd like to know today before, next year at this time. When we're faced with a three hundred thousand dollar hole, so. Okay?
Thank you, John. You good, are you?
Oh, it's flowing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to move it with you, Jim.
Second.
Oh, it's a favor.
Aye.